I think so. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any comments or statements from the public before we begin? Seeing none. Danny's not here. Mrs. Tudelo, is he coming or is somebody else going to come?
They're trying to get substitutes to be in the book. You know, they're the big shoes for film, though.
They're very big shoes. Okay, thank you.
Just have his people call our people.
And Mrs. Tudelo, update on dropout rate?
Hello.
Good evening. I believe everyone received a table similar to the one that we usually go over at this time of the year. Where you're looking at the number of dropouts, the dropout rate and the four-year graduation rate. For as far back as I can get it, in MMS, which is our student information system, and that's the '02-'03 school year. And then on the four-year graduation rate, as far back as I can get it, from the Department of Ed, which is the '05-'06 school year. As you may recall, last year, we saw a bit of a spike in the dropout rate and a decrease in the graduation rate. But in looking at the data from 11-12, we have managed to reduce the dropout rate a bit, down to 3.3 percent. And that four-year graduation rate is back up above 80 percent, at 82.1 percent. As always, I would like it to be higher. We continue to work to make it higher. I do remain frustrated by some of the data entry pieces. And I wish that I could be reassured from the state that when we make corrections, they're made, but I'm not always confident that they are. So I think that's still something we need to be more diligent about. This summer, I plan to work with Mr. Simonello. I haven't told him this yet. But we just really need to do a better job of tracking the kids if they leave the middle school at the end of grade eight and do not arrive at our doorstep at Westport High School. The challenge there is that for scheduling purposes, we roll the database in March. So from March to June, we have to be very conscious of who has left the middle school or who is not coming to the high school. And I think the best way to do that is to keep a log of the records and where the records have gone.
Now, before you go any further, just carries one comment you made about the data entry piece. Can you explain?
In the fall, the state releases some preliminary reports, like the students who've dropped out, students who didn't graduate, students who were still enrolled. So for instance, in this year, in October of 2012, when I looked at the list, I found six students that were coded incorrectly. And I'm not sure, it could have been an initial data entry error on our part, but they describe it as a window to correct the errors. And so we did work with Beth Lewis and Michelle Raposa, and we corrected four of those students. Were not at Westport High School. Three of them, as we sit here tonight, are at Bishop's Stang. One is at Barington Christian Academy. So we know they're in school somewhere else. We changed those. Then there was one student who was a special education student, who did not receive a diploma but received a certificate of attainment and should have been acknowledged for that. And there was another student who had moved out of state. So Beth and Michelle make the changes physically. What I'm not comfortable with is when I go back to my school and print the reports, those students still appear. The state assures us that they have been corrected. But my question is always, if they've been corrected, why are they still on the report?
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Michelle, what's the state average?
The state average, this year was 84.7. So we are a little bit lower than the state average.
Do you have any more of your presentation? I did interrupt you.
No, that's okay. And the only other thing, and again, if you look at the three-year and five-year average, when you look back to where we were, those are reversed, it should be five at the top. If you look back to where we were, again, we certainly have managed to cut it in half. And so we have made a lot of progress, but as always, we will continue to work on it. Today, the counselors and I, as part of our Race to the Top grant, were at a early warning indicator system training. And we did get a packet of very valuable information about Westport, which also includes data on looking at students as early as grade one with the early warning indicators. Unfortunately, I got back late, but I will leave a copy with Karen Augusto if you would like to take a look at that. There's plenty of ways to look at the data. But I will say that on the four things that they look at, one being students proficiency or advanced level in ELA/MCAS in grade three, Westport is above the state average with 69 percent of our students meeting that, only 61 at the state level. In grades four to six, which they consider late elementary, proficient or advanced on grade six, ELA and MAT, Westport is at 78 percent for ELA and 59 percent for MAT. A little bit higher than the state average, which is 66 percent. And right at the average there at 60. The third indicator, from grade seven to nine, passing grades in all grade nine courses, state average is 75 percent. Our figure is 79 percent. Where we remain lower than the state in the four categories is the high school graduation rate. But three of the four, we are on track. The only other thing I would like to see us have a deeper discussion about at an administrative level is the early warning indicator system. When they are looking at students in the lower grades, and you look at Westport, you can see that in grades four, five and six. In grade four, actually, three, four, five and six. In grade three, 49 students, about 38 percent of them, are indicating a high level of risk at not graduating from high school. In grade four, it's at 32 percent, grade five at 32, and grade eight, uh, grade six at 30. And so I think it's worth, and we know who those students are. You can go in and print a list of those students. So I do think that's worth exploring. Because by the time they get to grade nine, when they're entering grade nine, 14 percent of them are at risk. Still a number of students at risk. That translates into about 12 students. But nowhere near the number in years before that. And so I think trying to identify those students and closing those gaps before they get to grade nine, I would like to see that as a priority.
Now, before I open up completely to questions, can you, mostly for people that are watching because they may look at these numbers and say, well, 82 percent doesn't, and three don't add up to 100, where are the other kids? So where are those other kids?
It's two different formulas. The dropout rate is the number of students who drop out of school in a given year. The graduation rate, and the one that they use and they publish on our accountability report, is the four-year graduation rate. So that's for any student, in this case, who walked in the door of Westport High School in September 2008. Any other students who entered after the fact, that 82 percent represents that graduation rate. So that changes because you're not, you don't always have the same number of students. But there is an adjusted rate, which would just focus on the students that we keep for the entire four years. The rate they publish and go by in terms of accountability is that rate which includes everybody who comes in and out of the door. So that's why it's really two different sets of data that you're looking at.
And it also, correct me if I'm wrong, the kids that are here for five years are not included in this data?
Correct, because they're still enrolled when this is calculated.
So special ed students might be here for longer than four, or a student that's in?
Special ed students might be here for longer than four, but they're not necessarily on a diploma track. They might be on a certificate of attainment. But we do have several students who do stay for five years. Our five-year graduation rate is higher. Right now, I think it's around 85 percent. But it's not, it's not the same students.
Any questions, Michael?
Yes, if I could. Hi, thank you for the information valuable that we're making progress on as we go forward from last year's dropout rate, which was pretty much at its peak in the past five years or so. Very pleased to hear about a plan in place for dropout prevention, long-term strategy. And certainly with the ambitious targets we have for our current MCAS scores and the new program that's coming up. But I have one question also. Last year, when we had that peak year, we talked at length about reaching out to students up till they're 21 years old. And I think that goes along with this data tracking. We're losing some. We don't know what happened to them because they left town, or they left the school, or transferred and didn't follow up with us. So I think that will help us in that regard as well. I don't know if we had any progress reaching out to some of the students. I know you had some letters that were prepared last year.
We do, but we're going by the last piece of information that we have in MMS. And sometimes, you know, people move. They change phone numbers very quickly. So it is hard to track. We continue to reach out, but we don't necessarily have a huge success rate with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Before the guidance department comes up, actually, it's the high school counseling department and Sherri Michael from the middle school, I just wanted to say a couple of things. It's been a very ambitious year for the counseling department, eighth through 12. Like everyone else, they're taking a long, hard look at the data that they have in front of them. What I'm most proud of this year is their work in the area of curriculum, where they have written a curriculum that resembles the curriculum of every other department in the school and in the district. And that is delivered to every single student in the building. And I think that the most interesting part of that for me is the feedback that they collect from students because those are our most important consumers. And so I think that has really helped them target some of their interventions, whether they're individually or for small groups of students. I know it's, they've taken on a monumental task. So I just think they need to be acknowledged for their hard work.
Thank you. Most definitely. So guidance presentation, who's coming up? You can stand there, or you can sit. Are you doing the presentation? Is that how this is working?
No, we'll have a separate piece. I'm Marie Phalos from the high school counselors. These packets were put together, actually Maggie Benaz and Bridgette Buckless helped us to combine them together. But it kind of goes through what each of us will be speaking about, and you can follow along with the extra material that we put in there. So I'm going to speak to the Race to the Top and the Mass Model Initiative and how the curriculum pretty much came out from that. Massachusetts is one of 12 states that was selected for the grant, but Massachusetts is also the only state that included the guidance or counseling department in that grant. We have been attending all the conferences and workshops through Race to the Top. And one thing I'd like to say is that Mrs. Tudelo has come with us to all of them. She's the only principal that has been there from any of the districts. And we really appreciate her support with that and has helped us a lot to go through all of this with us. The Race to the Top project is, it focuses on the school counselors in developing and delivering a school counseling program that provides all students with the knowledge and skills for success in college and career readiness. We're part of the Project 4C, which is the Mass Model for Comprehensive School Counseling. And what that's done is made a catalyst for change. It outlines how the school counseling program can support student achievement. It's linking the school counseling program, delivering to the mass college and career readiness goals. And we use, we're using data and evaluation to be more proactive rather than reactive. And we use that data to see our strengths and weaknesses, and then we change our curriculum accordingly. Being that this is our first year going through this, we'll be able to adjust it at the end of the year to what we see we need to do better. It's an equity-driven model, so we combine a mix of counseling methods. We do do school-wide. There are some small groups that we do as well, and one-on-one when necessary. The development of the counseling curriculum is for all the grades, so we do it in the high school, nine through 12. Mrs. Michael will speak to the middle school. It focuses on three domains: academic, technical, workplace readiness, and personal and social. Also, as part of writing the curriculum, if you see, there's a brochure that we developed for the counseling department. We have to write our own mission statement, so that is part of it. We gave this out at the beginning of the year when we did our seminars. It lists our counseling calendar and then some of the topics that we will cover in each grade with them. Mrs. Michael and Mrs. Ruel will speak more to the actual curriculum and what we're doing through that. So I will introduce Mrs. Michael, and she will speak for the middle school.
Okay, as Mrs. Phalos said, we have also developed a curriculum for the middle, the middle school, grades five through eight. In your packet, you have the instructional plan. It's still a work in progress. We are tweaking it as we go along. One of the components of the curriculum is the workplace readiness or the college and career readiness. And along those lines, we've really been trying to do more around the subject of transition to the high school, which is a subject that is really important to me because I really do like working with that population. The eighth graders moving on to high school, it's an exciting time for them. So along those lines, I recently, as an example, as part of, part of the transition, I did an eighth-grade guidance lesson with all the eighth graders by class. And I started by going over the Mass Core elements and the high school guidance, I'm sorry, the high school credit system, and just going over credits and what they need to do. Then the next thing we did was we looked at their individual transcripts, which you have a copy of a sample of an eighth-grade transcript in your packet, and went over that with them, just so they can see what a transcript looks like and how important that will be as they get into high school. And then from there, we developed portfolios, which I brought an example to show you. This is actually, the high school had started using these last year as an organizational tool. So we decided to start this in eighth grade. And basically, what they're going to put in there is their transcripts and their academic information, any awards and certificates that they might get, community service. We, you know, we went through everything. And then the other piece that we worked on was, I did introduce them on Career Day. We did introduce them to a, the Massachusetts Career Information System, which is a, we had them all go on and do a career interest inventory, so they could start to get ideas about what they were interested in. And they all have a username and password. And I've encouraged them to go on at home. So we're keeping that information. And there are some examples in the packet of some of the career clusters and things like that they could access. So when they did seem to like it, I did put some feedback in the packet. I did a little questionnaire with them to see what their thoughts were about it. And we'll continue with that as we go along. So that's just one example of a guidance lesson through the curriculum.
Great.
I'm Leslie Ruel, one of the guidance counselors at Westport High School. We also did a curriculum as well. It's copied, or it follows the same copy as the teachers. So if a student hears words like "goals" and "essential questions", they're hearing that in the classroom as well. So we utilize the same system as all the teachers here at the high school. There's a sample one from the junior career. We did a resume writing seminar. And in there is a sample of different, different types of resumes because not everyone will be going to college, so they need to know how to write a career one. And there's also a sample college resume. So of those students that we met with, all of the junior class, 116, 88 percent of the class was there for that particular seminar. And of that, 94 percent of the students did respond. We give them like a post or a pre-survey of what a resume is, what's in a resume, what do you use it for. And 94 percent were able to answer those questions after we were done, so that was promising. From the senior seminars, we developed a couple of smaller ones. Many of the students, if not all, have to use the Common Application, which is what most colleges are using now. Still, some of the state schools are not using it. But mostly, you know, if you're applying to UMass Dartmouth up to ground, you are using the Common App. So we found that working with students individually takes a lot of time. So we set up smaller seminars here in the media center. And groups of 10 or 12 students were able to have a laptop. We had a Common App up on the screen. And they actually started the Common App process, which was real helpful for us. Again, from the senior seminars and the input, a lot of students apply to BCC as a safe school. Sometimes they utilize it as a stepping stone. So we find that we do a lot of online applications. So again, we met with 21 seniors and did an actual application with them in small group. We will, on Friday, do small groups with Career Dimensions. Through the Project Action Grant, we were able to get Career Dimensions, which is a, like a career portal, sort of like the Mass CIS or Naviance or something like that, that BCC actually uses. So any student that has done the BCC Summer Academy has a Career Dimensions login. So all the juniors will be meeting with us in small groups, and they will be logged into the Career Dimensions portal. And hopefully, they'll be able to do their values inventory, personality inventory, and we can start them thinking about colleges now. There's samples of all of that in this packet. And the last thing is the PSATs. We always meet with students to go over what their score means. We had 64 sophomores take the PSAT and 81 juniors this year. And from that, we, you can see what the average student scores were and AP potential. So that's going to help us when scheduling night comes about. And also to discuss that with parents, students that might shy away from AP. We can tell them, we have data here that you will be successful and not to be nervous of that curriculum. So this information, as Mrs. Phalos talks about, we are collecting data. It's a bit raw now, but we are trying our best to, you know, move along with this. And hopefully, as we go on through the years, we will have more exact and better data as we go on. I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Ammaral.
Thank you. Good evening. In your packets, you find the Mass Core page, if you could, it's right down there. Mass Core is a Massachusetts Department of, Massachusetts Department of Education initiative. It's a recommended high school core program of studies for college and career readiness. Like the old SCANS competencies of the 80s, one of the, one of their targets includes workplace readiness, where students going into the workplace right out of high school, in order to be successful in the workplace, are expected to have certain competencies in reading, writing, communication, and basic math, in order for them to be successful in that setting. It also is concerned with reducing the need for college remediation. Students who attend a Massachusetts college or university are required to take the Accuplacer. The Accuplacer determines their skill levels in math and English. And if they score below a certain level, they now have to go into remedial classes in math and English rather than go into the normally required math and English classes as part of their program. This has had two effects in the past. Those remedial classes are not counted towards the degree. And it may take them longer than four years to, to complete the degree program, depending on how much remediation that they have to be engaged in. So Mass Core is a comprehensive set of courses and other learning opportunities. Mass Core, its goal is to have every Massachusetts college, high school graduate complete the following units: four years of English, four years of mathematics, three years of a lab science, three years of history and social studies, two years of the same world language, one year of art, and five additional core courses in the following areas: business education, health, technology, AP classes, dual enrollment, senior project, online courses, college credit, service work-based learning. As you can see, it's well-rounded. It gives students the opportunity to explore a lot of different areas. Students at Westport High School are encouraged by their guidance counselors to exceed and go beyond those minimum requirements set forth by, by Mass Core. They are encouraged to, whenever possible, take as much English and math as possible. They're encouraged to take, rather than three years of a lab science, four years, four years of social studies, three or four years of a world language. And whenever possible, to follow and complete core sequences. For example, following their math sequence all the way through to calculus whenever possible. Following the world language sequence all the way through from the first year of foreign language through the fourth year of foreign language. In so doing, this exceeds not only the Mass Core requirements, but the basic requirements for state colleges and universities that, what they're asking our students to accomplish before they apply. So I thank you for your attention, and I will now-
I have one question, one question before you walk away. Do the students who do dual enrollment that take the Accuplacer already, do they have to take it again if they, so once they take the Accuplacer, they're good?
Once they take it, as long as they reach that, that level that they have to be at, they don't have to take it again. If they take it and don't reach that level that they need, and then, of course, they can take it as many times as they want to. Once they take it and qualify, then they're done.
Okay.
I've got a question also, if I could. Mr. Ammaral, appreciate hearing about the college and career ready program. My question is more reflective on the earlier comments about losing touch with students after they leave the high school. When they are at the high school, certainly I would imagine the guidance department has good relations with, and knows all the students. When students exit, do they stop into the guidance department? Do they get involved in that at all?
After they've graduated?
No, if they just leave before graduation, dropping out.
Sometimes they do give us a call or drop in. For example, one particular student I'm thinking of this year, who did not complete his senior year last year, has been in quite a few times for our assistance with a special program that he's trying to get into at BCC. So yes, we do see quite a bit of that. And we encourage students, when they leave, that if there's anything we can do to help them out or support them further, no matter how long they're out of school, that we are willing to be there contact.
I could appreciate hearing that.
I'd like to introduce Mary Jo Maderis, our student adjustment counselor, who will speak on student interventions for success.
Good evening. I know I've been here before you in the past to speak about the Project Action program that I am the director of. And in speaking tonight, I just want to remind you that the school adjustment counselors, Mrs. Plourd, who's here this evening, and myself, we continue to offer the full array of services to the students to complement the entire student, so not just the academic supports and the guidance counseling leading towards career and college, but perhaps the support that's needed on those more delicate issues that sometimes come from influences and factors that happen outside of the school walls. So I've outlined for you some of our frequent areas of support, and they continue to be the transitional support from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. They also, the academic demands, and that follows the students even through the college application process and graduation. Your typical adolescent peer conflicts, relationship issues. Sometimes those are with their peers. Sometimes they're with their teachers, perhaps family members. And we're available for that, family situations. And that could include moving, loss of income, grief due to loss of a family member, anything that can happen to any one of our families. And we also provide a lot of support around anything that the student feels is relevant in terms of impacting on their ability to be completely successful in high school. A lot can happen in four years, especially during adolescence. And we try and engage early with them as freshmen and support them fully through their four-year career with us. We also provide a great deal of support for the transition planning for the special education students who do choose to stay with us and provide the utmost services in accordance with the special ed laws for the students between the ages of 18 and 22. So what I have outlined for you here is some new offerings that we have through the counseling department in line with the Massa Model, which includes some additional freshman orientation services that we have put together through the guidance and counseling office for the families of our ninth grade students. We started by having a smaller orientation for freshman families to come, where they could come and hear again what Mr. Ammaral referenced as the Mass Core, review the transcripts. They do come up in the spring, and they have an opportunity to meet with us. But I think it's quite different once their child's been in the building for seven to 10 days, and they probably have more questions. So they're able to come in early on in the school year and have those questions answered. What we did this year was we took a look at the end of the first semester, and we tried to target the students that perhaps could use a little bit more support in their freshman year. Perhaps their attendance, or their grades, or some things that they had vocalized to us indicated that as a counseling department, we could step it up a little bit or maybe re-engage the family or engage more families to come in and offer additional support. So we provided that on January 30th. And at that time, parents were presented with the report cards. The parents met in this group here with the guidance counselors. And the students who came met in the separate room with Mrs. Plourd and I to kind of go over some different related topics and set some goals. As usual, we did discuss with the family that we are always available to implement individual counseling. Many of the students have it as part of their IEP, where we're supporting them with that in addition to 504 services. Many of the students have it as part of their IEP, where we're supporting them with that in addition to 504 services. We also can refer families out for any kind of counseling. We often help our students secure insurance, if the family's in need of medical insurance, a lot of different needs. And we have group counseling that's available to the students as well, depending on what they identify is our issues. The Project Action Program is in full swing. We have successfully completed a career class in the fall, where some of the Project Action students went down to the Westport Elementary School and they provided a career fair for the fourth graders, and it was a lot of fun. And my students were able to interact with professionals in the community who came and volunteered their time to meet with them and then to go down and introduce themselves to the fourth grader. So that was a nice collaboration with the West. We also have a career and fitness class, the Advocats, where students meet with Ms. Christie Tripp, and they do a lot of community service, and that's a lot of fun, and it's received a lot of kudos from the kids. We have college planning coming up this spring, and that's going to result in a college fair, which will be provided to the students here at Westport High School. And this is based on a survey and data that was collected from the students here as to what colleges they would like to see us pull in, so that they can have a more detailed conversation with them. Mrs. Ruel was kind enough to start a homework club, something that we've wanted to get off the ground for a while. And that'll be starting tomorrow, I believe, and that'll run through June. And then we have the ever-popular study skills that Mr. Bornstein provides for the students and peer tutoring, which is always an option to help students in academic need. So that's kind of my piece. I know Mrs. Plourd has some additional information. I don't know if you have any questions?
Before you go, I think Eric has a question.
Yeah.
Do we do anything during the summer or during the eighth grade year to get kids excited about coming to Westport High School?
Most definitely. One of our most popular options for the students who do qualify is the BCC Summer Academy, where the students actually report here to the Westport High School entrance. We get on a bus and they go to BCC, where we have high school staff working in conjunction with BCC staff, teaching them their English and math skills. Mrs. Ruel and I also do a general skills component, which serves as an elective class for them while they're on the campuses as well. So not only are they meeting their high school teachers and they're getting to come here every day, but they're interacting with the upperclassmen, they're meeting professionals at BCC, and they get to tour the different programs. So we've been able to go to PT, we've been able to go to learn about the nursing program, the science lab, and it's a very interactive experience for them. So we have a full calendar, it's about seventeen days, that we do that. So that's a great transition.
I mean, like open house though, like Diamond does, and first of all, he does have these big, open house parents come in and meet the teachers.
Right, and that's a piece that Mrs. Plourd is actually going to be addressing. In the past, we have done that in the spring, and we have done that in the fall, like we tried to do early here. But we actually are thinking about meeting that summer need as well. So Melissa will speak to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
In order to enable the counselors in the district to provide a continuity of services to all of our students, the counselors from the West, the middle school, and the high school meet together on a quarterly basis. And some of our topics are listed in the packet for you, and the dates that we're meeting are also in there. Some of the topics that we discuss are strategies for parental engagement, policies and procedures that we use for service intervention, and teaming that we can do for various school events. This will also help to ease the transition process amongst the schools in the district. We also wanted to talk to you a little bit about what the rest of the school year is going to look like for the high school students. On March twenty-sixth, we have our course selection, where students and parents can come to the school to discuss different class options with teachers and counselors and plan their schedule for next year. Bay Coast Bank will be sponsoring a Credit for Life Fair for our junior class on April eleventh here at the high school. This is an interactive event where each student will act as a twenty-five-year-old, beginning their career of choice that they've chosen, and map out their lives according to a budget based on that career choice. And they have worked to create that. The fair consists of fourteen booths, and that's also listed in the packet for you, each of the fourteen booths that will be there. Each student has to visit each one, and some of the different booths include housing, transportation, luxury items, in order to create a monthly budget plan that their salary will allow. And they're going to be given a portfolio, which will include the monthly budget plan that they'll be able to take a look at. On April twenty-third, Chris Heron will be speaking to the high school, and we have invited the eighth grade to attend as well on the importance of a healthy lifestyle, good decision-making, and the dangers of substance use. The Massachusetts Education Financial Association will be presenting here at the high school on our annual college night. This year that will take place on April twenty-fifth. And throughout May and June, the counseling departments from the middle and high school will continue to work on transitioning the eighth grade to the high school. And I know the question was asked about what we're going to do this summer. And in hoping to increase the attendance and provide more flexibility to the families so that they'll be able to attend, we've decided to try a step-up orientation in August for our incoming freshmen. We'll be handing out their schedules, we'll tour the building, help the students locate their classes. So when they come to school, in September, they'll already know the building, they'll already know where their classes are, and they can get excited about knowing all of that and feel comfortable with that. They'll get their lockers. We're going to have some upperclassmen here, so they'll have some friendly faces to see when they come in. And we're going to have a lunch together, so that everyone can talk and get to know each other. And they'll have all of us there, so that they can see and meet us before coming. So we thank you for your time. Please feel free to ask us any questions about anything that we covered. If there's anything in the future that you may want to know about our events, we included all of the dates in your packet, so you can feel free to join us.
It says, Chris Heron, two thousand twelve, it is the thirteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's the thirteenth, yeah, it's this year. He's coming. It's not last year. No, he'll be here. I believe it's the Tuesday after our vacation.
Great.
Hi, thank you for that information. I just wanted to let you know that there's a group in town called the Westport Business to Business Group. You've got a couple of events that are career-related, and they've often expressed to me their desire to get involved with career fairs. So there's probably a hundred and forty members, they're all Westport businesses, so the students would also be able to connect their everyday environment to some of the businesses that they see, but also to hear more about it.
Well, and Bay Coast Banking, they asked us for some community businesses that would like to be volunteers at that event. That's what they look for. They have a booth captain, and then they ask for local volunteers to come in so that they can present their businesses to our students, so we'd really welcome any help. So if they want to contact any of us in guidance, that would be great, or if they want to give us some information, so we can contact them.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you, before you head out, I just want to tell you, I love the idea of a summer fair. I have one thought for you guys. I don't know if you've taken this as something to think about. With the numbers that we've had issues up here for some of the activities, as well as some of the athletics, I don't know if you, I think as an eighth grader coming up, it's often hard. I mean, if you drive by the bulletin, you see tryouts are X-day, but without the connection, maybe a student that you know, you may just totally miss the boat. And then we may be having kids not signing up for clubs or activities or athletics or whatever. So I wonder if that's something that maybe could be incorporated, so that you've now kind of tied things in. The kids are in the building, they have the opportunity to learn about what their options are to extracurricular as well.
Well, we do have representatives from the counseling department go down to the middle school in the spring to talk to the eighth graders about, so maybe we could make sure to extend that.
Scary though, I think, coming and being the only eighth grader walking to the school that morning when you're supposed to be somewhere. I think that's scary.
I agree.
Or ninth, incoming freshman.
It's a big change, and we do want, so I think that you're right. And I think that it would benefit the students to be able to have those friendly faces to see and the connection to those clubs and activities that they're interested in. So-
We have, for students, every time we go, students-
Come up to the mic.
Students do come with us, and they represent sports, clubs, any type of activity we have here. So, and they're usually juniors, so that they'll be seniors in the following year, so we have done that, so keep that in consideration.
Good, thank you. And the students, I'm sorry, and the students that we do use as upperclassmen in any of the orientations that we use are students from our say-in-the-game. They're the student athletes and leaders that we've identified that will be here for the students, so that they could say, oh, you, you know, I know you, you were maybe representing the field hockey team. So they'll have that face to look at and see. So we hope that that will help too.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where were you guys thirty-five years ago?
Could've used a little guidance.
Little Portuguese kid at Temple Middle.
Do you guys have any, does anybody have any other questions for them?
Seems like you're all very busy, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think you have done a beautiful job with this. I'm excited to see what it does for the students. I'm very excited to see some of the things that are happening as juniors for college stuff, information, because I think by the time they're seniors, too late, or they're feeling like they're behind the game at that point. So getting them going as a junior is so vital. And so I'm, and I'm thrilled to see a college fair. And I'm wondering, is that just going to be opened up to our students, or are we going to open it up in general? Curious. Would it, would it intrigue more colleges to come if we did?
It might. I think at this point, I have a small class of students who are working on this, so it is student-led. We could certainly look at perhaps starting this within the school for our students. And then I always, as I've done in the past, you know, asked members from the community to come in and give me some rich feedback on how I can improve on the next event. What we might do is kind of go into this thinking that this might be a bigger event down the road, but we are doing this during the school day. So if we were to involve other schools, I think we would be looking at a much larger venue. And how would we do that? And certainly it's something that we can do. It would just mean more timing that I have to do in a-
No, one other thought. I know, community-wise, people are always saying, how do I get involved? I don't have any kids. I went here to school, MIT, Harvard, wherever it may be, how do I help? Are we thinking about maybe reaching out to some of those graduates from some of those schools? And maybe they can also attend this and talk to the kids, give them some feedback on what the school was like, what the academics were.
Absolutely, that would be, that would be a great idea. We often start with the students themselves. Did their parents go to college? Where did they go to college? Do they have alumni status, you know, at their colleges? Who can they reach out to? But we could certainly, you know, open that up on a larger scale and have somebody other than just an admissions person or a PR person from college.
And I wonder if they might develop some connections for the students too.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great idea. Thank you.
Good job.
I just wanted to thank the high school in particular, Mrs. Toullo, for spearheading this. I know it's a big job, and I know it's gone down to the middle school, so I appreciate their work as well. One of the things that we've been able to do this through the RTT grant, and we have it for one more year. So any tweaking that we can do, we still have one more year of funding to capture and perhaps be able to do even a little bit more in the last year of the grant. After that, then it's going to be more of, you know, what we can do on our own. But at least the grant allowed us to explore what can we do, what planning we can do, go to the conferences, get more ideas, and now bring it back. So hopefully we'll be adding a few things to this program over the next year or so.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Oh, Michael, go ahead.
If I could just ask Dr. Colley, as we're looking over the presentation, I think it's pretty clear that the intent is certainly being affected. The RTT grant was to create some professional development with the existing staff to put things in place that could continue on their own. And I also commend the work that's being done. You know, a lot of this information has been there before, but it's a new way to put it together. And I see it as having a long-lasting impact. And it all lies in the chairs that are, that are in the front row. So thank you for embracing this training and new approach to some services, and we look forward to it continuing.
Thank you. Okay, on to Michelle Raposa.
Michelle left-
Oh, no.
Sick, early.
Oh, that's fine. I'm glad she's not here. I hope you feel better, Michelle.
Michelle's not here, she's homesick. No, no. But just to give you an idea, you know, we talk about trying to collect data in order to improve our services. So for example, you know, we've collected a lot, a lot of data for the counseling services, and now we're trying to implement some new ideas. Mrs. Raposa has also put together a survey, trying to figure out, okay, how much are people using the food services at the beginning of the year? The year we saw a little dip. Now, in my conversations with her, the amount of participation has picked up again. So we're hopeful that a little bit more information and feedback back to us, that we can, again, make any other tweaks that we need to make in order for next year to provide better services in, in the food services. So you will see this. It's both going to be paper and online. So we hope to have, even parents who right now don't participate, we'd like for them to actually fill out the survey, so that when we get the information back, we can see why some people use it, why some people don't. I mean, there's many different reasons, or perhaps there's certain days they do, certain days they don't, perhaps it's the menu. What is it that they like or don't like about the program, so that then, from one year to the next, we can adjust it. So just wanted everybody to know that the survey was going out.
Why are there two separate surveys? Is this one version versus another, and you haven't decided which version you're using?
One student, one parent.
Oh.
That way, because sometimes, you know, the parents have an idea that's not necessarily the student's idea. And, you know, in many cases, the students give us information that we wouldn't get from the parents. Obviously, this information will not just go to Michelle, it'll also go through the Health Committee, so that we can look at the information coming back. So if students say, hey, we want ice cream every day, we would have to say, well, that'd be great, but, you know, doesn't fit into the, the health guidelines that we have or the federal and state guidelines that we have for nutrition.
The new school's going to have a Sunday bar.
Okay, we will see about that.
Have you done these surveys in the past?
Not quite like this. We're hoping to get as many parents to answer this one, so that we actually know what the families at home are thinking about in terms of nutrition. So.
Anything else on this? On to the FY thirteen budget update.
FY thirteen budget update. One of the things you're going to see is, this goes through the end of January. So that's pretty much half the year. Most of the expenditures, you should see them somewhere around the fifty to sixty percent mark. One of the things you're going to see is some one-hundred percent expended. There are some things that we buy at the very beginning of the year, a lot of the technology that we had already planned on purchasing. So those lines clear out fairly quickly. The teacher professional days, for example, those are in the negative. Again, we haven't done the transfers. Next school committee, the twenty-seventh, you will get the first packet of transfers, rather than waiting until June, like we said. Melissa's putting those together. So at the next school committee meeting, you will have all the transfers that we've done so far for approvals for you, so that we can make this look a little bit more true-to-date. So for example, you have the professional development teacher days, and you have other lines for substitutes, and you have other lines in the SPECT department for salaries. Those are all in the negatives, because the actual lines that hold that money are the teacher salary lines. And we'll transfer that money into the staff development line once you get the approval. We just had a staff development day yesterday, so she will have that. We were waiting for this one big day, so that we can make that transfer on the twenty-seventh, along with a lot of smaller transfers.
Michael?
Yeah, thank you for the explanation on the professional development line item that gets transferred back to the substitutes. We do hear about that often, because that looks a little bit out of line. But what I'd like to do is turn the discussion to that transfer packet that you talked about. And I think it's a good time for the school committee to offer you some guidance and some suggestions on what transfers may make sense. That's, that's part of our role in oversight of this current budget year. I would ask, in the area of safety, the look at a potential transfer, one, the middle school cleaning. We've talked about it, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen any positions posted. We're supposed to be increasing, or I was under the impression that the decision was made to increase- made to increase the periodic cleaning, and that was based on an email from you and a discussion we had on the high wipe content in the various rooms at the middle school. So I would consider that, let's not hear that we didn't do it because we didn't have the money. Let's make that transfer, and that would be my input. The second transfer that we've also had some discussions on in the area of security is to seek available funds in order to upgrade the security camera systems throughout the Westport Community School four buildings. That, again, is something that we have discussed, and I'm bringing it forward here under the FY13, so that as we're looking at this budget, we're not just going to wait for transfers. We're going to ask if those make sense. Certainly, the mechanics and putting that together is a decision of the administration, but I, for one, urge looking at those two areas.
Okay. Since you were going there, I'm going to keep following that lead. We do have, under the expenditures, not necessarily the salaries. We have been letting you know that we have about $124,000 worth of salary residuals from, if you look at the page one with the FY13 budget update that has the hiring resignations and filled positions, savings and deficits. We've been carrying this. That may be some of the areas that we transfer monies into. I would like to be able to not only do those areas, but as we go through the discussion about the needs that we identified this year, that at the beginning of the last few school committee meetings, we presented those needs in terms of what the schools needed. Some of those needs may be able to be taken care of this year, using those funding. I'm going to give you a list of those in a few minutes, when we get into the FY14 budget, to explain how we get to the administration draft one proposal. But we also have a few lines that, in this year's budget, in terms of expenses, we're looking at them, tracking them, that we do have some concerns. For example, under health services, we have a couple of the lines that are hitting the 85%. So if we need additional services there, we're going to need to make a transfer in there. Maintenance of buildings or maintenance equipment, maintenance of buildings is at 89%, and we still have a few more months to go. We just had some issues with some of our equipment, so we may need to do some transfer there. We have a couple of areas that we're tracking. Legal services, it's at 53%, which is, seems okay, but we're in the middle of a couple of arbitration issues, and we do have negotiations that are just starting. So I think we'll need a transfer in there as well. All that to say that, when we get into next year's budget, as I said, we identified $1.8 million worth of needs. Some of them are one-time needs that we may be able to use this year's funding, so that we can at least address the need and take it off the list, so that we don't go to the town this year with an FY14 budget that's well over a million dollars. So I'll do that in a few minutes. Just to let you know, looking at the revolving accounts, again, I don't see an issue in the revolving accounts. We did take a look at the, where is it? The school lunch revolver. That one, we're not projecting on making as much money as we had in the past. So so far, for next year, my expectation is that even with the small increase that we did in terms of the cost of lunches, we are going to start eating into the monies that we had in reserve, and we still have equipment that needs to be replaced. If we were to replace the equipment over the course of this year or even into next year, we would not have a reserve left in that account, partly because, again, we had a little bit less participation. We have less students, so we're bringing in less revenue. And we also have this issue of additional cost of the food that we're still not quite able to cover with just the 25 cent increase.
Michael?
Two things. One is, you made this comment, you didn't see any issues with revolving accounts.
Except for that one.
And for two years, I've asked to audit the revolving accounts. We haven't done that yet. So I do see issues. We haven't had an outside audit of any of our revolving accounts that I know of, in terms of a complete audit of the revolving accounts. And I just want to, again, remind you of my previous request for that. Regarding the food service, I made the suggestion that we seek an overview of our food service department, that we contact companies such as Chartwells, which has got a great food service operation down the street at UMass Dartmouth. They also do a K through 12 program, and they will give a free critique of what we're doing. I think before we start looking at $50,000 ovens, we should be getting that input. Outsourcing can sometimes make sense in the food service area, and so that would, the two areas that you discussed in the revolving accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Dr. Colley, that 239 balance in the school lunch revolving account?
239 negative means that we're projecting, because we pay salaries out of there. So you have from now till the end of the year to make that funding up by the revenue that we collect every year. However, we were carrying about $100,000 going into last year. Into this year, it was a little less. I'll show you, you know, we're looking at, we're going to have, this is transportation. We're looking at next year, about, anywhere between 60, about 67, $65,000, with an ending balance of, that was 68 last year. This year, we're anticipating about 41. The ovens, they're about $48,000 for two of them, and a steamer. So if we do that, we'll be at about a $7,000 to $8,000 loss next year, something that we would have to cover.
Typically, in the past, the school lunch, the food service, the revolving account, you'd have a balance at the end of the year, and we'd carry that balance over.
Yep.
And we'd use that for...
So far, we have held it for the last few years, knowing that we have equipment that needs to be replaced.
I mean, that money would be used for equipment purchases, repair whatever.
Equipment, yep.
And what you're saying now is that the projections are that we're not going to be carrying forward.
Last year, we lost some amount, because the middle school was down for quite a few weeks there at the beginning of the year. So that ate into that surplus that we were carrying. We also...
It's now somewhat offset by the salaries, too, though?
What do you mean?
We were closed, so we weren't paying.
Just because we were closed, we still had the people trying to make the bag lunches and whatnot. So it doesn't quite even out like that.
They're still getting lunches, they just aren't getting hot lunches.
Right. And then this year, we had a small decrease, plus the less students we have in school in general, means less students participate in the program, but you still have the staff, because you still have to have all those lunches. So in many cases, it gets driven by that.
Dr. Colley, on the student athletics and activity fees, we're running about $94,000, combining them both, we got about $94,000 to the positive. We've been hitting our parents with bus fees, every other fee in the world, 225 to play sports. I see that we carried over $42,000 last year.
On the transportation.
Why are we carrying so much? Why are we, I mean, we haven't even collected for the fall programs yet, I mean, the spring programs. And we're going to be running into the hundreds of thousands of dollars here. Why is this happening?
Are you talking about?
We have one line, 47, one 53, the other line's 46, 328. We haven't even started collecting for the spring seasons yet. I can't imagine stipends being that much money.
Hold on.
I'd hate to be carrying a balance forward of 40, $50,000 every year when we're asking our parents to pay for buses. And we've always told them, "If we don't need your fees, we're not going to collect them."
A lot of these are for...
Transportation reimbursement, too.
In terms of the activities and the athletics, actually, it's the activities that have carried a balance.
Yes.
We have not used the activities' balance. However, this is one of those areas that I would say we need to start, because we are not charging stipends to these activity accounts. They have been coming right out of our budget. So one of the things we need, we were going to do this year is to transfer that and use the activities' fees to pay for more of the stipends, so that hopefully, we can reduce the need to ask for more stuff for next year.
Well, how about 47,000 athletics? Forget about the activities, it's only $25 a student. To play basketball, middle school basketball today, lost to Bridgewater, by the way, in their championship game, unfortunately, had a great game today. But we're carrying $47,000 there. We haven't even collected for people playing baseball and what other sports we offer during the spring seasons.
Baseball, softball.
Baseball, softball. There can't be that much stipends left over to be paying people. We already carried over $18,000 a year before.
I'm not sure if we even have paid the winter. I know we haven't paid the winter, and we haven't paid the spring. And we don't, I'll find out. As far as I understood, that amount was going to be used. Last year, we collected about $87,000. This year, we're only slated to collect about $82,000. So there's going to be less money coming in this year than last year, and I don't know what Jason has planned to spend in the different sports.
I know he carried over 18 from the prime.
I know.
Carolina?
We're still charging people to play the sports. We shouldn't be carrying anything over. We've obviously, 225 is too high to be charging people, dropped down to 200.
That's right. Carolina?
We don't want to make money on it. We want to subsidize it.
Is the 22-6 for equipment purchases included in that 82 number?
Yeah.
Which 82 number?
82-2-6-6 revenue?
Oh.
So then revenue was actually...
That's what I'm saying. A lot of that was spring sports stuff, like all the baseball uniforms and all that. So I don't know if he's ordered and we've paid for it yet. I'm pretty sure he's ordered. I don't know if we've paid for it yet. So there may be some more money going out the door. That's why, you know, if you want that specific answer for next time, I can bring it.
Please.
I'll have him come in and explain the money piece for that particular one. Because we did have all that stuff that was stored in the locker room area, that when they cut through the roof, we had SOM pay us back. So that goes into that account, because we're going to spend it out of that account. But I don't know how much he's already paid for it. I can check with Melissa. So the 18,000, usually that gets carried over. The problem is, some years, we actually spend more than others, depending on who's in line for, like, new uniforms and things like that, and uniforms, believe it or not.
I don't see new uniforms in a while in any of our sports programs.
I actually have the same question.
I think it would be reflected in an accounting sheet, which would be the journal for that department, and we can see what's already been spent. And I think, you know, I don't think we need to have the director come in. I think we need to look at the financials of the revolving accounts, and...
Yeah, but the director would also give you what he expects to spend, which is a...
But there's a trend that includes years that he wasn't here, that I've been requesting this. And I believe that just seeing a balance in a revolving account doesn't give us any detail, and that's reflected in the recent conversation.
But there were also, you're right, but there are also some expenses that we don't typically have, because, which were reimbursed when all that stuff fell on it. So I think that's what he's saying, which, obviously, we don't need him here for that. We just need to know, what does he still have left to repurchase?
I heard about baseball uniforms. I didn't know, were they part of the damage?
Yeah, the stuff in the locker room.
So next year, we have some of baseball.
Yeah, I guess so.
That's why I want to know if he's already, I know he's ordered a bunch of it, because I saw the POs come through, but I don't know if he's received them and paid them off yet.
I actually had the same question as Eric did, but on the transportation reimbursement, because I know that this did come up last year, and I know we talked about fuel costs and all that stuff.
Transportation is a little different. As you know, we have built, within the transportation contract, a fuel clause. Last year, fuel didn't go up. This year, the trend up until this month had been stable. So in other words, the amount of money that we had put into the fuel clause hasn't changed up or down. But I think, just looking at the last few weeks, I follow the price of oil, it probably will go up. But I don't know if that's just a spike because of winter, or is it going to be all the way through the spring? In which case, we may need to do this. We can pay it either before the end of the year, or we can pay it after the end of the year. That was one piece that we do have in the contract. So we have some flexibility with that.
Well, I'm with Eric on, I think we need to start chipping away at some of this stuff that we're doing, whether it be monies that come out of these revolving accounts, once we know they're stable, and we have that cushion, or whatever, they need to purchase the uniforms or whatever. But the same thing with the busing. I know we talked about it with the busing, you know, and return to semi-normalcy. Anything else on, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, along those same lines, I mean, I'd like to see these fees be shared more, you know? And the way to do that is to, you know, some of these balances don't need to be there, and maybe we do need to ratchet back some of these fees.
All right. Are we ready to move on to the budget of this one?
Yes.
Action agenda on FY14 budget draft one.
If we could, could I just give an update from the budget subcommittee? Would that make sense?
Sure, you can do that if you'd like.
Okay. In the budget subcommittee, we met after the last presentation, and basically reviewed the process. The budget subcommittee reviewed the plans of going forward with the budget, and certainly in recognition of our other town departments setting new dates that are earlier than we've had to meet in the past. We highlighted the, I highlighted, and it was balanced discussion on coming up with a list of a needs budget, and then what the process was going to follow, and at what point would it be known as the superintendent's budget, which is, according to Massachusetts law, what we're obligated to receive from the superintendent. In this presentation, it'll say we review it. The law says we review it and make recommendations. I think that's missing in one of your slides. But the key point of the discussion that the budget subcommittee had was, when are we going to get the superintendent's budget? And we've got a second presentation as a full school committee here this evening, and we've started to, although I'm looking at it as a draft one, and I'm just still wondering, what date are we going to receive your recommendations?
These are my recommendations you're going to get today. We call them draft...
This is the superintendent's budget that you're going to make a presentation on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And, you know, just...
So we're not going to have five drafts? This is...
Well, we call it draft one, so that we can keep track of any changes that we make based on your recommendations. From here, they go to FinCom. FinCom may come back and say, "Hey, would you consider taking this in and out?" If we decide we want to do that, that becomes draft maybe three. If then, we go to the...
That's what I'm trying to point out, that if we read what we're required to do as a school committee, each title is not draft one through five. It's a superintendent budget, recommendations that we come up with, and then the school committee budget. It's not draft three or four. It's the superintendent's budget, and then the school committee budget is what goes before town meeting. So again, thank you for clarifying. This is your budget you're presenting us with this evening. I just wasn't sure.
Now, I understand that. The only concern that I have is, over the past few years, even what you would now label as school committee's budget has changed. Between the time we send it to FinCom, go and talk to Board of Selectmen, and then what actually ends up in front of people at town meeting floor, has changed up and down, because we've taken some things on, put some things on, and people get confused if they see... because we've taken some things on, put some things on, and people get confused if they see the first one, it has the same name as the one they see in town meeting, and the numbers are different, they get confused. So, the use of the draft just has been something we've done over the past few years. But if you want me to label them that way, they-
If I could through the chair, in referencing the procedures used for budgeting, at least over the past four years, I've had some strong objections to, including draft form and not having a process followed that's outlined by state law. So, the first step, they say, is that the school committee receives the superintendent budget. We don't have to make recommendations this evening. We don't have to review it this evening. You're giving us your budget tonight. So, we can now look at that without anticipation that next week, we're going to have a third and fourth presentation on the budget that changes. So, that's, the draft approach hasn't worked for us as a school department. I don't-
I'm looking at a memo that says that we are supposed to have, the warrant article deadline is February twenty-sixth. That does not apply to us?
I'm assuming that went to the town departments.
Came to us as well, I guess.
But if I understand it correctly, that's for the town departments.
Okay. Michael?
Currently, on the town budget, we have a placeholder of a two percent increase. That's been discussed here previously. I know we talked about it in the Subcommittee meeting. But, so, they're looking, at February twenty-eighth, they're looking at a two percent increase to the school department budget with the other finance departments. And what I'm suggesting is that, that's why we do need to look at this, now that we know it's a superintendent's budget, come up with our recommendations, whether it be as a Subcommittee, first, and then the full committee, or a full committee at the next meeting. But yes, that date is here, and that's-
So, just to give you a little bit of a background as to how this budget was put together, we took some of the recommendations from the Budget Subcommittee, met as an administrative team, and we went through and decided, what are the things we feel we absolutely need for this year? Again, we talked a little bit about some of the things that we would like to be able to perhaps move into this year. Again, looking at the monies that are in both the special ed account and the salaries accounts, and try to collect some of that. So, I'm going to go through this. You can call it the superintendent's budget. But in reality, it's the administrator's budget.
I'm sorry, in reality, it's what?
The administrators put it together with him. That's what he's saying.
So, if you take a look at the budget where it started, we began with the building needs requests of just about, oh, hold on. Of about one-point-six million dollars. In addition, we have some capital needs that we would like to see come out of other accounts rather than the actual operating budget. We have, right now, trying to look at just the things that are required, whether it be by contract, by regulation, or by law, including the demands of special ed and the English language learners. We're looking at about a three-point-five-nine percent increase, a little over half a million dollars. So, when the town first picked the number, not sure from where, of two percent increase, I had sent them a memo saying it's more than that. At this point, this is what I would like to say to the town. If we were to do our regulatory and contractual obligations alone, it'd be three-point-five-six, or five-nine. In addition, we are trying to, as an administrative team, we looked at some of the things we don't have that would actually impact, and hopefully, a large impact to our student achievement. And one of those is, we have very little opportunities for summer school, other than for special ed. So, we have students that perhaps are not doing so well in school. At the middle school, for example, if they fail more than two core subjects, or two or more, they have to either take summer school or be held back. The problem with that is if they don't take summer school, we just retain them, but we don't have summer school. So, they have to search around for neighboring communities that actually have a summer school that they can participate in. At the high school, we do have some students that qualify for the BCC program. But in fact, we know there's more of them that need it. At the elementary school, again, we sometimes have some residual monies in Title One that can provide some summer school. If you're not Title One eligible, you don't qualify. And now, we're finding out that even as we test the students coming into kindergarten, we find the ones that come into kindergarten from preschool are doing a lot better in terms of the skills that they have to come in and get ready for learning in terms of reading, writing, math, versus students who've never been to a preschool program, or perhaps have not attended our preschool program. So, we're looking to provide, as one of our requests, would be additional funding of about, a little under a percentage point, about a hundred thousand dollars to provide a little bit of summer school for all students, all the way from those entering kindergarten to the ones coming here to the high school. We do have some of that as well, that we've discussed in the administrative group, that we would charge a little bit of tuition, because we find that when it's free and it's in the summer, a lot of times, people sign up, we have the staff ready to go, and then students don't show up. So, it's providing a little bit of buy-in from the parents that would help us offset that amount. We also have a few people that are in the buildings that are part-time, and we're finding that part-time really becomes, for them, in many cases, full-time. They're working extra hours that they're not getting paid for because the job really, over the last few years, we've cut those positions to part-time, and it's not working. We have, out of district tuition, the possibility of about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And that one, I'm going to put into this budget at this point. My hope is that we can work with the parents so that it doesn't come to pass. But I don't feel comfortable taking that out of the budget. So, their operating budget request would be about eight-hundred thousand dollars, about five-point-two-seven.
Excuse me, is there a budget? I understand this is some highlights of the budget, but I'm looking for a copy of the superintendent's budget, and I don't have one in my packet.
Yeah, I'll get to that in one second.
I'm asking if there's one in my packet.
As far as I know, there is. It's after the PowerPoint.
Was it this one here, Aldo?
Yeah.
And that's the new presentation format? It's because it's a list of- That's not, that's not the format we're using from the past few years.
We also have another set of requests, and this may hit that warrant article deadline, that we have three things that have happened this year. One, we do know we still have the PCB monitoring issue. We just came from a Capital Improvement Committee meeting. Although, it seems like even at that committee, people are moving towards perhaps not using the middle school as a, the building as a school. We still, while students are in there, we're going to be required to monitor the PCB levels. That cost about fifty thousand this year. I believe that it's a capital item and should be in a separate budget, not necessarily the operating budget. We also lost our van this year. I know I had added it to one of your packets, where the van basically fell apart because of rust. It's like a nineteen-seventy-three or so van. We have also had a huge problem with our old equipment, like our old trucks are not holding on to equipment, such as the plows, because they're so old, the frame is rotting out. So, we're looking to at least replace one, if not two, of those vehicles that are kind of stitched together. And one of them is, right now, at the Town Depot, because it cannot even be registered and put on the road. So, again, this would be perhaps a separate capital article for about a hundred thousand dollars. And then, the other thing that we finally got off the ground this year, we have some of our specialist time being charged to other districts. Because we're sending our specialists to out-of-district placements where they're just not our students. They're other students. We're able to capture their time and charge the other districts, so we get some money back. But because we have no mechanism to capture that money, if we don't have some sort of a revolving account that captures that revenue, it'll go back to the town, and we won't be able to offset salaries and expenses that we do incur, even though we're charging all the districts for our services, or the services of our specialists. So, I'm recommending that we do a revolving account. It would have to be redone every year. We also have been seeing an increase in the Medicaid reimbursements that are coming to the town because we have more services that we're providing, and those services get reimbursed. Many of them are under Medicaid. The money has been collected by the town at this point. Not exactly sure where they put it, but we could use this kind of money to offset, for example, special ed out-of-district placements. So, it's another recommendation you're going to see.
Michael?
Well, I figured when he was done, in terms of, is that for the PowerPoint?
No.
I'm just trying to-
You want, can it wait? Do we let him keep going?
Well, in terms of reimbursement, the Medicaid services are, because we're providing them in-house.
Yes. Psychologist-
Also reflective on the budget is going to be the impact of, by not having reimbursements of services that come through our reimbursement account.
Are you talking-
The outplacement.
Oh, the circuit breaker.
Right.
Circuit breaker is a-
Does that go through a revolving account also?
It is its own revolving account, but can only be used for monies coming from the state.
Right. So, what I'm anxious to kind of point out is, we're continuing to review aspects of a budget that we don't have in front of us. We've got a list of some needs of each school, and, but these aren't a budget. I can't either find it in my packet, or, but this is not the entire budget for, for instance, the Westport High School. Am I missing some pages? We're going over a PowerPoint presentation of a budget that we don't have in front of us. So, it may make sense to postpone the PowerPoint until we have that budget.
Are you looking for the big, is that what you're doing?
The same thing, the last meeting, I thought we were on track to come up with that as the next step. The recommendations made, and then from your administration, to a point of a budget, the superintendent's budget is that full thing, correct?
That full service, that full budget has not changed. These are the recommendations to change those specific lines that you're going to see in that spreadsheet. So, it's the same budget. You're not, it's no different than what you saw the last time. Just if you go along with the recommendations, we would change those lines, and that's what we would have you-
Right, and that big packet has a cover sheet that has a page of detail that isn't here.
And again, that page has not changed because we have not presented this to you, and you have not accepted those changes or added, deleted from it.
But that's not how the process works. If you're recommending them, you put them into your budget, you make a superintendent budget presentation to us. Is this what your administrative team and yourself is recommending? Or is this a list of one-point-eight million dollars in increases?
No, if you let me get there, I'll show you how much we're expecting to ask, and from where, and for what.
Okay, but can we get a copy of that tonight, too?
We can recess, and we can go make a copy of-
I mean, I'm very uncomfortable-
Last week-
Having waited for the Subcommittee for that document, your recommendations. I mean, we came in, we had a meeting, we talked about the superintendent's budget. We're having a presentation tonight. We've clarified, this is the superintendent's budget. And I'm going to talk about all the aspects of the budget that I envisioned, but I don't have it on paper yet. Because you want our input first, but I think we want your input in a paper format.
I think that's what this is.
I'll look through it. Which page?
Like after the PowerPoint.
I think you just had it. It was color-coded.
Yeah. Are you looking at it? Did you add up all the columns?
Mine's not color-coded because I did, and I have questions.
And does it come up to it?
I have questions on it when we get there, but we haven't got there yet. You're right. I do have questions.
It's not a budget. What you're looking at is a list.
Mine isn't color-coded because I printed mine. It's the same thing, right?
I should use my color printer. You read it? It's not a budget. It is a budget.
I flipped that, Michael, yeah.
Go ahead.
It's not a budget.
Well, since-
I have to request that we postpone this until we have that paper in front of us.
Well, I don't think postponing, I mean, we need to get going.
We don't have that paper in front of us, and let's not speak to the audience to say that we're looking at a budget that we don't have in front of us.
Carolina?
I would like to hear the superintendent's presentation.
I would like to see a budget.
And I'd like to hear it. I'd like to hear what he's prepared for us.
Yes.
And if you stopped interrupting, he would probably have been done by now.
Continue. And then, when we get to this, if we still-
Form of a motion, I've asked to postpone this a second time.
Are you making that motion, Michael?
Yes. Please. Because if you look at what's in front of you, let's not, let's first correct telling me that I have a budget in front of me when I do not.
Is there a second to Mike's motion to postpone the budget discussion? Is that what your motion is?
Is there a budget prepared?
To have a prepared budget distributed to us. That's what I've asked for.
If Karen was given five minutes, would she be able to go print it, or is this something that we're just, is it possible or not? Is there a-
You're telling me, three of you are saying it's here in front of us, and it's not.
Michael, can you let Karen finish? Eric asked the question. Please let Karen answer.
Is it something that could be just a click of a mouse? Can you print it, or is it going to be?
If you would like to view it-
It's online.
It's online. It's from the last meeting.
Should we go to our meetings, minutes of our last meeting?
Minutes from the last meeting.
And click on it, and the budget will be there.
But these are not in it. This is not a completed process that can be called a superintendent's budget.
If we go to the packet from last-
Yeah, I'm at it.
Let me ask the simple way, Dr. Colly. What are you talking about? What is the grand total of this PowerPoint? I'd like to look at that.
He hasn't gotten there yet, Michael.
He hasn't gotten there yet. That's the first thing to tell us.
All right, please. Is there a second to his motion, first of all? So, there's a motion on the table. Is no second to the motion. At the top, where it says revised budget one-twenty-five thirteen, that's the link, correct? You don't have it. So, yes, at the top of that page from one-twenty, is that one-twenty-fifteen?
Perhaps I- Perhaps I-
Okay, so, this is the January twenty-fifth budget.
These are his recommendations. He's going to go through, he's breaking down what the principals have said- He's going to go through, he's breaking down what the principals have said. We want all of this stuff, we know we can't have it all, so we're going to cross out the things that we don't need right now, we can put aside, these are the things we really want, and that's what he's going over now.
Now, we were advised that decisions were gonna be made and a superintendent recommendation was gonna be made this evening. Now, we're going back to the one twenty-five budget. We had a subcommittee meeting after one twenty-five and, and it was clear. We're talking about some numbers here that we still don't know what they total and it's not here and this is not it.
Eric, you had your hand up.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Oh, I'm, I thought you did. Dr. Colley, can you please finish your presentation?
Just in terms, in terms of talking about the revenue side of the equation for the town and the schools, um, one of the things that people need to understand is last year we received about seventy thousand dollars in additional state revenues through chapter seventy, but then we received about two hundred thousand dollars less in grants because the ARRA stimulus funding is decreasing. The last of the funds that raised to the top will end next year. Most of that is very targeted for special education, um, curriculum development for, um, as you heard, the Masca Project, for STEM development. This year, the state is only going to send an additional about forty thousand dollars because they've actually worked with the formula to figure out how much of that money that the town can put out in terms of taxation revenue. They're saying the town has more of a capacity to provide more taxes, therefore more revenue, so they're only increasing their amount by about forty thousand dollars, a little less than a one percent increase this year in state revenues, even though you may hear that there's money in the governor's proposal, we're only gonna see about forty thousand dollars of that. By statute, this town can only raise taxes by two and a half percent or about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, they can also add a growth factor, any overlays that get released, and free cash from previous years. So, in terms of the revenue side, unless the town wants to go for an override, we're talking about, uh, the seven hundred and fifty thousand, any growth, any overlays, and then the, what they have reported about eight hundred thousand dollars in free cash from last year. Um, just to give a, a little bit of, um, um, information in terms of the tax rate for the town, we've been at the bottom ten percent of all the towns in the Commonwealth while the income wealth has been just about average because we see that our land values per capita are quite high, we're in the top twenty-five percent of all the towns in the Commonwealth. So, when people look at, you know, how come the state is saying that we can pay more taxes is because our income is average, but our per capita land wealth or value is very high, yet we have kept our tax rate fairly low. In fact, we're one of the few towns that still has a single tax rate. Just to review, we have had some cuts from other years such as administration, teachers, and we have increased activities, although one of the discussions I wanted to have tonight is we've heard, I've heard from individual members, the idea of cutting back fees, but I don't know how much and from where, so hopefully that tonight can happen. In terms of looking at other towns around us, just so you know, the state does have, and you can go on the website from, uh, V E S E, and they have a comparison between our towns and other towns, and the only town that is in our neighborhood that kind of compares with ours is for Haven. So, I put some information out there that may be useful for people in comparing what we do and what they do. Their per people costs are a little higher, uh, we're both lower than the state average. They have a few more students, although they have lost some students as well. We've lost eleven percent since oh eight, they've lost about five percent. The whole south coast has lost, uh, quite a few, uh, not just enrollment, but population in general. And then, if you look at proficiency rates, as you can see, for Haven's a little higher than we are. So, those are just some benchmarks to look at. They do have a higher pers, um, taxation rate as well and probably because they do have, um, some businesses that they can rely on more than we do. Um, in terms of the process, just looking at that, we did look at the building base needs. We now have looked for priorities, um, in terms of input from teachers, from staff, from the administrators, from school councils, and we put together a priority list that we're now hoping to put a budget together. Um, again, we did not go through and make those changes in the actual budget document not knowing what the school committee and this discussion would bring. I was bringing that discussion to this table. I guess it, it would have been different if it had just been in front of you, um, but I guess that's when I walked away from the budget subcommittee meeting, so perhaps I was-
No, actually, my comment in the last school committee was an Excel formatted budget, okay? That was publicly requested of you when you said, "What was the next step?" And I explicitly said, "A superintendent budget in an Excel format." Because then I can take and, and look at it and, and make some decisions on what, what I would like to vote on. Uh, this is again, uh, a, a, an update of a process at best because-
I think I do understand, the more Michael speaks actually on what he's getting at, is having all of this put into a budget, then we sit there and we whittle down where we think we need to be at. Instead of having, here's our wish, because we're adding an extra step here tonight by looking at all the wishes, and we just wasted a step where if you already had the budget, put everything in the budget that you have, and then now it comes to us and we say, "You know something, we can't do this, we gotta do this, we gotta do that," and we can pick a line item and say, "Get rid of this and get rid of that," rather than wish lists is, because now we're gonna have wishes, he's gonna go back with a budget, he's gonna come back again, we're gonna be doing the same thing again, over and over again.
It's supposed to happen twice. There's a superintendent budget and then a school committee recommenda, uh, review, as it says in the PowerPoint, but more important is the requirement for us to come up with a recommendation. Typically, our recommendation has been an approval, uh, on a split vote of the school committee, but we need a budget. We have FinCom asking for one. There's nothing here, as the liaison for yours, for us to FinCom, there's nothing here that, that makes sense to them. So, uh, you know, I would urge we, we forward that on to the subcommittee ASAP and they can schedule a meeting.
I unders, I, I understand what, I do understand and I understand what he was saying before.
G S-
I like, it's, Michael, I'm talking now.
G S B accounting, it's a law.
Michael, I, you've had the floor. I'm not arguing with you. I am not arguing, so stop arguing with me.
I was asked.
Actually, you weren't given the floor that time, you did just speak.
I asked to speak because Dr. Colley said something about walking away from a subcommittee meeting. I, I don't know what that-
I agree with you and I understand and I, and I, I get that, but I also do like to see this side of it, too, where it actually pulls out the very specifics.
So, we're going to administrative meetings. We have a date that we're supposed to be meeting.
Michael, I didn't interrupt you, I'm just asking for the same courtesy.
We also asked for a schedule that was put out and we're missing dates.
All right, we're gonna call a recess because I have to use the ladies' room anyway. Karen, maybe you can get your hands on a budget?
Along with the schedule that, that was done in grid form, that showed the dates, and we're now not meeting our obligation for a budget. We're going through these presentations, but we have the stuff in front of us and we don't. See, but are you looking at this stuff? I don't know. I see. I need to look at that. No, this is the same as us. There's gonna be more additions, it's going up to one point eight. I'm looking for his recommendation. No, but that's, that's, that's in the list. It's not a budget. It's good. It's good. We're in a household, I know. That's what I'm saying. It's- I, I, I looked at it here, I looked at it here. I didn't even know it was, I said, "No, I don't see it anywhere." It's this project from, that's not a, that's not a project. I have to go. Uh, basketball. Oh, yeah. It's, yeah, almost over. Boys had a good game today against the middle school team, against Bridgewater. We won't miss you in a snowbank.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, four, uh, cup, he was on his motorcycle, so he got hit. On seventy-nine doing a funeral detail. I don't know who it was. Yeah. I don't know why they're riding motorcycles in the middle of winter, but hey.
Or somebody pulled out a gun.
On a funeral detail.
He was on twenty-four, we saw him halfway in.
Yeah, seventy-nine and twenty-four.
They took him to Rhode Island Hospital, but they said he was fine.
Yeah, he's fine. That's, that's what Channel Ten said at least, like, get a text message every ten minutes for him. Do me a favor, write down the number you think, yes, the number that he's presenting. I have no idea what it is. And I have to do it all. All right, that's all. I just wanted to make sure you understand. That's why I printed it all out so I could have it. Because I don't understand, I just found, it's a conspiracy. I won't go that far, but. Basically, the month is going from one to one point six to one point eight. Mm-hmm. The reason we would have the whole, his recommendations is because if it comes up that they would increase, wouldn't it work? It's another set of recommendations. I get it. I get it. But we have less time to look at it if we delay it, that's why they have these dates. Now, what's gonna be presented to the board committee?
Do you need a copy or do you, can you look online?
A copy of what?
She's copying the budget.
The one that was presented? That's not why I've been requested to this whole conversation, so don't take time for that. The one on one twenty-five?
That's the budget, Mike.
No, it's not.
What are you looking for?
That's-
Why don't you come with me?
Okay.
And go tell Karen what you're looking for.
It's not available. It's not done. It's not complete. The superintendent's budget for FY fourteen, his recommendations after getting all this info. We've talked about it a month ago. We talked about it the last meeting. We talked about it at the beginning of this presentation because the title slide said superintendent's budget, so I've not asked-
You know, we're in recess still, so.
I, I, and you and I can have a conversation. She can't enter the conversation for many reasons.
We're in recess, we can't be talking.
The chairman and myself can talk regarding a request.
All I ask is if you wanted a copy of that.
I said I never requested that budget. How about the Red Sox? That is in my car. I was expecting a new handout with the adjusted presentation, so go. Don't hold up this meeting for something I never requested. It does not exist.
We have to wait for Karen anyway.
It does not exist. So, you've, you've asked me to go in and share that with her?
Yeah, go share it with her.
I think it would be better if you do.
Really?
Thank you. Grab your candy. Her door was locked.
I think they hide it.
No, they just lock the doors today. I always miss dinner on Wednesday nights, so.
I know, I know the feeling.
And I do have a prior engagement at seven thirty, just to let you know.
Okay.
Yep. Lot more fun than this.
Well, she's not here to, um, take the notes.
She's been on a couple of months.
I thought we were gonna start recording. Oh, I don't know. I don't even know what the situation was then. No. I only read about it in the paper.
Situation?
The recordings.
What recordings?
Of our meetings. Like, it's not working, like, something broke and-
No, that happened, it was, that said, oh, you might not have been here.
I wasn't, I was in Boston.
Oh, that's right, okay. Yeah, because it broke actually right here, well, like, right at the beginning of the meeting.
That's what the Herald News told me, at least. I was talking about when I made the request to have these recorded, it was all broken. I'm just gonna- Oh, yeah, the recorder in it. Get an iPhone and record right there. I don't know, I think it's under my own expenses.
No more technology.
Yeah. I do kinda miss the, uh, paper product.
I don't mind it.
Wait, no, I print them out myself.
There's that window that comes up. You can get all the pretty colors, so.
You guys can all surf the internet, I can't because I have, I'm facing the camera.
Oh, I don't do that. I don't think someone even knows how to do that.
Tony's buying a new, think, a new, uh, blade for his plow.
Cut edge.
Cut edge.
I had my own.
We were sledding. I do have the one twenty-five budget out of my car, if I wanted it, I'd-
Can you go get it, please?
I don't need it, that's not what I've been referring to. I don't know what you guys are missing.
Here are his changes from that budget.
So, may one present that to us.
Why, why don't you put it in paper? He was, he didn't-
I don't need it in paper, even if it was on there, I'd be asking. No, I'd like to have it. He wants that into the budget. It's not there. Present the budget, here's our budget at fifteen point nine, fifteen point nine million, and then we, I think you understand what I'm asking, everyone else seems to-
Actually, I do understand that, Michael, but you kept interrupting me, so I couldn't say it.
I have the one twenty-five, we all have the one twenty-five presentation.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, thank you, Karen.
Oh, you do that quick.
Give a big paper clip. But this is not a budget, this is not what the title of the PowerPoint is.
We can't get the title of the PowerPoint.
I'll give you one.
There you go. There you go. Alright, call the meeting back to order. Dr. Colley, can you please continue going over the presentation based on the needs at the school levels, please?
And, and I, I do understand what Mr. Sullivan is asking for. Um, and I guess, uh, one of the things I need to say is, last year, we had a process that apparently the school committee did not like. I feel like I have been asked to do the process differently this year. I've been looking for direction. Uh, at the last school committee meeting, I presented the needs that the school committee asked me to collect from every building by building. From that meeting, we went to a budget subcommittee meeting, where basically I was told, go back to your administration, or go back and make a, a a cut, or a priority list, and, you know, that's the next step. So, I did that. That meant that after that budget subcommittee meeting, where I felt I finally got some direction on what the next step, the school committee.
Finally got some direction. Make sure.
Michael!
That was an improper statement. You just said, finally got some direction. You missed a deadline, sir.
You don't have the floor.
You missed a deadline again. That's what this is all about.
Dr. Colley, please continue.
This is not a budget preparation, the presentation.
Mike, you don't have the floor.
But I won't sit here and have someone make a comment about a subcommittee that I'm a member of and say, finally. Okay? 'Cause we haven't finally heard back since that meeting.
Can I make a motion to dissolve the budget subcommittee? The whole school committee deals with the budget, not just the subcommittee.
Point of information, she voted against that, so she cannot ask to reconsider that vote.
Voted against what?
She voted against appointing subcommittee members this year.
I would have to look that up.
Let's stay on topic.
I didn't bring.
Dr. Colley, can you please continue with the budget presentation uninterrupted?
Basically, based on the budget subcommittee meeting, I felt I needed to meet with my staff, which I did last Tuesday. That means on Tuesday, I was able to put together what the administration feels is the appropriate budget to bring forward. I had one day to do it. Storm hit. We're here today. So, what I have is for your.
If I could, because it's, again, inaccurate.
What's inaccurate?
The minutes of the subcommittee meeting.
He's not talking about you, he's talking about the administration.
The fact that he was told by the subcommittee that he was expected to show up to that meeting with his recommendations. This is.
Did the subcommittee even come up with a, a consensus at the end of your meeting?
That we need a superintendent's budget, absolutely. That we have a process to follow according to state law. We reviewed the process. It wasn't something new that we came up with as a subcommittee. It was a review of the budgetary process as established by Congress.
This meeting is gonna take all night long, and we have to get this budget done.
Hold on. Michelle, I am on that subcommittee.
Yes, we have to get it done.
Dr. Colley did what we asked him to do.
Absolutely not, Tony.
To go back and take, and, and make the changes, make the cuts, talk to your staff. That's what this is, Mike.
That's not what that is.
It's not the same.
That's not what that is, Tony. You, you, you're reflecting something.
Mike, have you looked at this?
Of course I've looked at this.
Alright, so these FY beyond delay, beyond FY fourteen, these were, these were cuts from that original list, like.
That's what it says.
It, it might not look what you wanted it to look like.
That's not correct, Tony. Those don't add up. It's not a budget. A budget is a particular, uh, format. It, it's outlined by the law also. But, again, I'm, I'm through. I'm very anxious to see a superintendent's budget, and it's not gonna be tonight.
Dr. Colley?
One of the things that, um, we discussed as the administration was to take some of these years' funds. Um, we know we have the hundred and twenty-four, the two hundred and twenty-four from SPED, to basically try to take some of the requests that were done for this year. Use monies from this year that we know we have for those requests, including the two hundred thousand SPED prepaid, so we don't have a deficit in next year's, uh, out-of-district placements. We took out about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars worth of requests that we figured could wait for a different fiscal year, different budget. Then we took a few budget lines that we decided we could transfer within the budget that we had this year, so that it would not affect next year's budget. In other words, it's not a, a request that would put us beyond what we have this year. That was about eighty thousand dollars. And then, we took some of the capital items that we figured we could wait and delay beyond FY fourteen, like the rugs here at the high school, and the equipment at the middle school. Again, if those buildings, um, get refurbished, or renovated, those would be included as part of, of that building project. So what we were left with was four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars worth of contractual obligations. Steps, lanes, and contractual increases. We also have some areas that are required by law or regulation, including, we have an ELL teacher that, right now, is only part-time. We just did the testing, uh, of our students who could potentially need to receive more services. At this point, if they all need services, we would have to increase that person to a full percentage point, or, you know, full-time. Also, we have ELL training that is going to be required of just about every teacher, and some specific teachers even more so, in order to deal with students who are considered to be English-language learners. We have SPED summer school, additional, um, requirements in students' IEPs, and particularly at the elementary school, and the possibility of additional teachers, depending on what the spring IEPs look like going from the elementary school to, um, the middle school. I tried to, uh, go through the list and all the buildings and color-code them, so people would know how the needs relate to the requests. Um, that's about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'm still looking at that special ed out-of-district placement. Both the actual tuition and transportation add up to about a hundred and fifty thousand. And again, as I explained, the staff do feel like we have to have some summer school. Uh, right now, a lot of our students who need summer school to, uh, recover credits, or to move from one grade level to another, in particular at the middle school, have to go to other towns. We would like to provide that here. A little bit of an offset there would be with, uh, um, summer school, uh, tuition. Most of our surrounding districts, when they charge for summer school, they charge anywhere between two hundred and up for a course that the student needs to take over the summer. I'm not even thinking of that much. Um, but I'm thinking, depending on how many students decide, or we need to, uh, have summer school for, just enough money so the parents feel like, yes, it is, it's imperative to send the kids to summer school, rather than to keep the kid back a year because they failed a couple of subjects, or, you know, they now need to go on a five-year plan at the high school, 'cause we don't have credit recovery on the summers. Um, let me finish and go through. We have a few other people, um, that have been working part-time. One of them, that I wanted to bring here, and it's partly why it's in this format, was a request, um, that has been talked about in, with individuals, but not at the whole school committee, and that is, um, high school music. It's a point-six at this point. To bring that person and a few other people who are part-timers to full-time would cost about sixty thousand dollars. And then, middle school and Wes really would like some monies returned into the budgets. I know last year, during our budget-cutting exercise in, uh, late spring, almost summer, um, they cut a lot of their supply monies, and they would like to see some of that money returned. And again, like, as we heard tonight, a few people are advocating for reduced fees, which would then have to be increased somewhere else in the budget. All those increases or those requests that would remain, it would alter the budget lines in the thick, big budget, if you want to go in that direction. It's about eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and, eight hundred. Yeah. Eight hundred thousand, seven hundred dollars, or a five-point-two-seven increase. In addition, I would request that we, um, create a SPED revolving account that captures both SPED and Medicaid revenue. Uh, SPED revenue from the services that we're providing to other districts, and a request on a capital needs, uh, article for PCB monitoring, and at least one replacement vehicle, if not two. Again, I bring in these for discussion here, and, you know, if you want me to just put these into the budget format, so be it.
Eric. Three questions, Dr. Colley.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I couldn't find any where. Where are we tracking now for surplus?
Surplus, that was in, um.
You mentioned that.
Those two, um, sheets at the end of the, this year's fiscal budget presentation. It's one twenty-four and two twenty-four.
So we're only tracking two twenty-four now, so we're, we were above, like, we were at four hundred about a month or so ago, so we're.
No, two twenty-four plus one twenty-four.
Okay. Now, those fees that you were talking about for summer school, uh, I don't know if it's legal. Are we allowed to, I don't wanna charge any kids to come to summer school. I know, I understand the point about, then, if it's free, they're not gonna come. Are we able to charge a fee and then give it back at the end of this? If they come, here's your money back. And I can't.
So that they come.
There's, if you don't come, we're keeping your money. It's not, you know, we gotta pay the teacher, and that way, we, uh, we're charging fees for everything in the world now, and I think it's supposed to have a free education, so.
But that's sort of like a.
And we owe these kids summer school. If we, if, that's our job, is to educate them, and we don't have to charge them to come to summer school. Third thing, third-party billing. We already do that through the town, but the town puts it in their general fund. It's always, I don't think we can have a revolving account for that.
A lot of other towns do. Just, it's about half and half. Some just put it into their, um, accounts at the town level. Some put it into a revolving account for the use of the schools.
And you'll think they'll let that money come to us.
I'm suggesting, if you take a look at that amount and the amount of the out-of-district placement, it's one way not to have to keep, um, trying to ask for money every time there's an additional amount. You leave it in there if you don't use it at the end of the year, because it's a revolving account with a limit. You can send it back to the town, and they can use it as free cash the following year.
So, if I could follow up with, so that one fifty, we'd be asking for that. That, we wouldn't be putting that in from this year?
Um.
We'd build it.
I, right now, I know the town's been getting, we get it on a quarterly basis, so I know that we're projected to bring in about a hundred thousand dollars in terms of our Medicaid billing. The reimbursement to the town's been, was about a hun, a little, about a hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more last year.
But that's above and beyond the eight, seven, eight hundred.
In essence, yes.
Michelle.
Michael.
Uh, we're talking about new revolving accounts. I just wanna remind you that there was a vote of the school committee to, to, to put forward in the spring town meeting, uh, uh, and we had the, the language, and we decided to postpone it till the, I'm sorry, the, fall town meeting, was it?
It was.
There's a pending warrant article that we've already voted on, that we said we wanted to put on this year, and we have a deadline of the twenty-eighth. Uh, we've already voted on that, and legal counsel looked at it and had some advice to hold it till the spring. So are we going to do that revolving account that we've already approved?
Um, we can.
Well, we should. We already voted on it, and we, the legal counsel that said, do it in the spring. I just wanna remind you on that. I don't, you know, that, that's what we wanted to do.
If I remember, the mechanism for funding that revolving account was, um, out of, um, funding leftover at the end of the year?
That's why it's appropriate to bring up. He was just talking about.
No, no, I understand that. If, if we do it that way, we won't have the two hundred thousand prepaid, or a lot of these needs won't go into.
But that was voted on by the school committee, and, and, and the, after the advice of, of.
We can look.
Legal counsel, was that we were gonna put it on in the spring. So I don't know why we're now saying if and, and maybe. That's what we decided.
We can look into that. We can double-check that, 'cause we did take that vote, so.
We have a deadline. We've already voted on it, but the deadline is the twenty-eighth.
Um.
Well, we voted on it, and we voted to pull it off.
I, I.
My memory.
We voted to pull it off. I, I, my head is pounding, I don't remember. Um, I actually have a couple of comments, and, um, I know I've been over this, trying to wrap my head around some of these things, which now, we're looking at maybe trying to get purchased with some of what we have, and um, get some of these things done, and not include it in the budget. Along with Eric, um, and, and I don't think any of us like to keep paying these kids to death, but I'd really like to see us start chipping away at some of these fees. Um, I'd love to see a tiered system up here at the high school, in addition to a family cap. So, for example, say, two, two hundred for the first sport, one seventy-five second, um, one fifty-third. Fam, per family included, with a family cap of, say, seven hundred or eight hundred dollars or whatever. We should not have families paying over two thousand dollars to play sports. It's absolutely ridiculous. And there are families who have three children that are paying two twenty-five for three sports for each of their kids.
And buses. And they, they don't take the buses home, 'cause they have sports every day, so it's, they're getting hammered.
It's ridiculous, and I feel like all we're doing is taking from parents and taking from parents.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see us chip off at that. I'd also like to see us, I see your hand, Michael. I also like, would like to see us chip off, if we can, at the busing, whether it would make more sense to go back up to the high school, and keep the highest, you know, so a seventh and eighth grade would no longer have to pay, or whether we just decrease the fee, I don't know. I don't know what would make more sense, and unfortunately, Michelle's not here.
I've got some info.
Um, and I also do, I do feel very strongly, I know I've spoken about it, um, to, we have two wonderful art teachers here, we have two, um, gym teachers here, and we have a point-six music teacher, and I think that's, I think we need to invest across the board in what we do, and I think the music education is going to help deliver more well-rounded students academically. It's going to raise their scores, et cetera. So, I would like to see, that was eliminated a few years ago, and that's one that has just never come back to the forefront. Um, and I do, I do see the guidance is looking at a transfer, 'cause I think that's also very important, a guidance director.
Mm-hmm. Those would be transfers.
Yeah, I see that. So those are my comments, um, as well as a kudos to the administration for chipping away that list.
In, in, we didn't do just the high school in terms of, um, fees for transportation. We did take a look at reducing the fees, um, to two hundred, both high school, middle school.
For busing?
Yep. I'm turning buses first. Um, we would be about, about fifteen thousand dollars less.
What is it now?
Right now, it's two twenty-five. We're projecting to bring in, uh, for FY fourteen, about fifty-five thousand. So if you go down to two hundred per child on both levels, you go down to about, um, fifty thousand. If you do one seventy-five.
From fifty-seven?
From fifty-five.
From fifty-five.
If you do one seventy-five, two hundred, you go down to, um, forty-six. So that means you would have to, um.
Find five or six thousand, one of them in the budget.
Yes, yes.
Well, I think, I think we, personally, I think we need to start thinking about that. I understand it's difficult, but I know you're there, Michael. You can stop shifting your hands. Go ahead.
Reviewing, trying to keep up with Dr. Colley.
Okay.
He's working the paper.
Go ahead. I didn't forget about you.
Oh, you.
Go ahead. You had your hand up.
I have to make a motion to accept, uh, Dr. Colley's presentation on the FY fourteen budget.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm gonna, I just, I just need to hear what-
Go ahead. For discussion purposes, Eric's seconding.
I need to hear what's going to be said.
Well, I think we're, we're well off track. We've got some, some other items on the agenda. He's put a budget together, he's going to get it to us. It's going to be his list of recommendations. And then the next step, in fact, is, uh, when we, we start to come up with our own individual, I mean, I, I applaud speaking for an arts program. My recommendations are going to include a hundred thousand dollars if we can identify some matching funds and create an arts academy here at Westport High School. But we have to get a budget from him first. My budget isn't going to be the same as yours. We then come together as a school committee and make recommendations. But if we sit here and individually, uh, on a budget that, that we haven't received, and I don't mean the copy of paper, it hasn't been posted yet, the superintendent's budget, okay, that he's presented on PowerPoint. And I think that at this point, we've heard about it, we've heard some highlights of it, we've heard it may change based on our input, but this is not a, a, we, we can't step over the first step. So, I mean, I, I have a lot of things that, that I want to recommend we do as a school committee to this budget. So that's, if, if that helps you understand the motion.
Yeah, it does. It does.
Well, I mean, personally, I'd like to see the fees. I was going to motion that we reduce fees, all fees and user fees, bus fees by, you know, third or something.
That comes after the budget's put together, though, when we do it. We do all that after that, that, this is actually what Michael was actually saying. This, all these recommendations come after we get, he comes with a budget and says, "Here's my budget." He told us what he wants to put in it, present the budget, and then we sit there and say, "Oh, we'd rather do an arts academy, we'd rather do this and that," and then we would lay down.
Charlie.
Charlie?
She doesn't want to agree with him.
Thank you.
But she's about to.
So what was that? All you're yelling for?
The requests that the schools put forward individually, the building-based needs. If we go through each of those pages, and I, I think that's what the request from the superintendent is, and decide, "No, no, we don't want to get rid of this kindergarten teacher, we want to keep that thing, so let's get rid of this, 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 and this." If he does what you're suggesting, Michael, that he could, takes his budget, that big piece of eighteen hundred million pieces of paper, and removes all of the recommendations he's making, in my mind, they're gone from the budget.
If I could just-
Can I finish? Can I finish?
I'm just asking for the floor when you're done.
You, you raise your hand, do the same thing.
You don't see it.
So now, now we will have a budget that doesn't have any of these positions in it. So how do we, then we're comparing the two budgets? I, I don't know-
Why wouldn't, why, through the chair, why wouldn't, why wouldn't it have all those things in it? He's going to present it, this is what, this is what our budget to look like.
Because these items would all be deleted. They'd be gone. They wouldn't be there anymore.
They don't have to be.
Michael has the floor.
First thing I want to do, because I was misquoted once again, I spoke of what the, our regulatory authorities mandates we do. We need a superintendent's budget. We have a presentation here about, "How's it going?" We need a superintendent's budget, step one. And then we look at it and provide some input. Otherwise, we sit here and, and, and do have these extended meetings. That's the process as defined, corrected, has not always been followed. I've been an advocate for, because I've looked at, at what is on every form in terms of budgetary process. Part of what our responsibilities are is to work with other departments within the town. They've asked us, "How's our, you know, let's get our budget going." So that's, that's the extent of where we're at. It, it, certainly not enough time to, to, to have a full presentation and full discussion of an FY fourteen budget.
Tony?
That we don't have yet.
Mike, Dr. Colley has presented an eight hundred.
A fifteen million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, an eight hundred thousand, seven hundred dollar, five point seven increase over last year's budget.
All this does is tell you what the increases are. A budget analysis, you look at what last year's budget was for each department, you look at this year's budget. There's a lot of items in those big stacks of paper that aren't reflective. These are the lists of increases. So what, are we not, are, are, are we not elected to review the entire budget package? We may look and say, "Well, we don't think we need, uh, a certain area of expenditure." It's not on this list, but we might want to cut that in order to come up with the hundred thousand dollars for an arts academy kickoff. But we need that.
Well, that's what we do next month.
No, that's-
Can I-
This is what he, he's asked.
One at a time. Do you still have the floor? Do you readone?
I'm good, I'm good.
To, just to what you're, I understand what you're saying, and I don't have a problem looking at the budget that way as well. I, it's, Michael, just-
I'm just saying, there's a motion on the floor. I don't know if you're speaking to the motions.
I am, actually. I'm speaking to, sort of, in how I understand what I'd like to see happen. What you're suggesting is that he has the base budget. As far as I see, we have a base recommended budget of fifteen million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five.
Yep.
So to me, now, I sit here and say, "Well, that's his base budget," and I understand we haven't seen all those lines yet. I'm not saying that that's what I'm voting on. But what I'm saying to him is, but in that fifteen million dollar budget, what you haven't included, and I'd like to see happen, is the decrease in fees, or this, that, and the other. I'd like to see him figure out how he thinks that should happen, and then go at it again and maybe look at the line items and the suggestion maybe, well, it came out of supplies or it came out of here, or whatever, in the nitpicking of the budget. But I see us having a recommendation of this fifteen million, nine hundred thousand dollar budget. And now I'm saying, for me to start at the bottom and then say we're going to add, my concern to that is, well, how many years now have we looked at the fees and said, "Well, now is not the time to do it because we already have fees worked into the budget." So we've budgeted for X dollars for so many sports, and that's what our budget is. We need to work that out at budget time. That's why I am suggesting we work that into our budget, in my personal opinion. And this is just the way I would look. Not everybody has an MBA or whatever and has all the knowledge that you have as far as a budget may work, Michael. I'm just, you have a business degree and, and I do not.
And that's why I said to simply accept his presentation, would accept. Recommend, I did not, the motion's not to recommend.
I understand, it's to accept. I understand. I heard your, I heard your motion. I don't have a problem with accepting his recommendations at all. All I'm seeing is, I, I can see the way you want to look at it, and that's fine. It's sort of like, we talk about our diversified learners all the time. This kid likes to learn this way, this kid likes to learn this way, this works better for that kid, that works better for that kid. That's fine, because we're all diverse as well. So we all may need to pick apart this budget slightly different. That's all.
So, so we're going to have to wait another two weeks before we make our recommendations into that budget?
I would say we have to.
Absolutely, you have to. Because we need to see the budget. That's the level of the point.
We have to, I would say we have to.
We have to see that fifteen-nine budget. And that's where we say, "Well, we're not going to do art at all. We'll, we'll cut the music program totally." Not that we will, we're going to do that, but.
Well, it's not about me.
I know it's not, but that's, that's the process now. We get a full budget, this is what he wants to present, or we can just go with fifteen-nine and say, "Towns is what we want."
My understanding is, it's the budget, it's last year's budget with these increases, Mike. They're not recommending that we cut this down.
The budget subcommittee meeting, previously, we expected a, a presentation that was not yet done. It's still not yet done. The, the budget subcommittee would, would also look at it independently, and that's when we would discuss it. That's why they have budget subcommittees. The mission is clear, uh, amongst the members.
Okay.
We would schedule a budget subcommittee as early as the beginning of next week if this, in fact, can be a document that we can look at. Online, tomorrow, I-
It's seven twenty.
Right now, we'll accept it as a presentation.
The motion on the floor is to accept Dr. Colley's presentation on the fiscal fourteen budget. Yes.
Of fifteen-nine, in whatever it was, fifteen-nine change?
No, no, the, the presentation, it has nothing to do with numbers.
Just to-
Why do we need to accept a presentation?
Nothing to do with numbers. Because we want to end that item number and get on to something else. It's listed under action. Because it has nothing to do with the final number. It has to do with how much money we're spending for, uh, every particular area within the budget. We need to get to that as a budget subcommittee. It's what we've asked to do.
Michael, can I, can I ask?
We have in front of us a list of increases, not a list of expenditures for next year.
Can I ask, uh, a friendly amendment to your motion, that we accept his presentation along with the suggestions made by the school committee to work back into-
That is the presentation. I think that's, that was encompassing it, I think. I took it as would be, that's his presentation.
Yes. So I'm not clear as what it is I'm supposed to look at if we have a meeting next week? That budget with all of this stuff in it, and that's it?
However he wants to make his budget.
I would take the contractual obligations, the LL training, LL teachers, these, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, put it into this, and this is what you would get.
Well, I like this.
That much changes.
Whatever he wants to present the budget to it as.
I just want to be clear, because I don't want to be here next week having the same discussion.
A superintendent budget, which we don't have yet. I think that's pretty clear.
It's fifteen-nine eighty. His, his recommendation is fifteen-nine eighty, seven-eighty-five, with those changes made to our existing budget.
Except you want to build in a reduction in fees.
I would like to see a reduction in fees built into the budget. I would, personally, I would like to see that point six music teacher moved to a full-time position. I think it's a shame that we have a part-time music teacher here. And I think it disassociates, uh, any part-time teacher in any school, disassociates them from the staff, just because they're part-timers. And I think it's even more here with the rotating schedule.
So do we want the superintendent to bring these further changes to?
Well, we still have a little-
The subcommittee will, will, will be voting on a budget that, that is reflective of what they think, and I think as a school committee, we'll get to those steps.
That's my concern.
We, we, we-
I, I'm just-
It won't be an hour's presentation or two hours, it'll be a new presentation reflective on the first presentation. And then as individual members, we, we may then, we, we most likely change it.
Um, Dr. Colley, I have a question on the supplies and other requests in FY fourteen. You have a fifteen thousand dollar. What is this, this is adding, this is making it ten at middle school and five at West? What-
They cut about-
We cut more than that.
Yeah, we did.
We cut the whole budget.
But we discussed at length, I'm sorry.
So I, I took a look at what they have spent over the last few years.
What's the current number?
I'm not talking about what the supplies are, it's right here. I'm just clarifying, because the number is less than what our building requests were.
Out of courtesy, I just want to let you know, and I was talking to Tony about our conversation in the budget subcommittee-
Thank you.
-was that it wasn't a, a line item for fifteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand dollars at the time, per, was, was, it said supplies. And, and the explanation was that the supplies that we cut last year. Well, we, we don't, we're never going to see a purchase order for supplies, so we asked for a little bit more detail of what kind of supplies, what did that mean? So it's reflective of your comment, and I, and I think we'll see that throughout-
I understand.
-new items that are on this list. More importantly, what I'm concerned is missing is all the other expenditures. And, and go at it as, at one document. So I, I think we've had a, a new presentation this week.
Mike, if you don't tell-
We've had a presentation every week for a month. We, we want to know if this is the final recommendation. He said it is, so we accept that. Doesn't mean we accept it as, as our budget.
No, it doesn't.
We accept his presentation.
I understand that. All those in favor of Michael's vote?
Yeah, there was. I, that's why we were discussing it. I did second it, yeah.
Eric seconded it right off the bat, saying for discussion, for this, with his famous, for discussion purpose.
Just for discussion purposes.
So you can hear him. All those in favor of accepting Dr. Colley's presentation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
There was no opposed.
No.
There's no opposed. Um, I would ask that we meet next Wednesday. You're on, oh, it's school vacation.
We have to pay, we have to, well, we'd have to pay gentos to come in, though, right?
And Beth to set the cameras?
Not necessarily.
No?
You could attend the budget subcommittee meeting that will be held at the, uh, town hall next week and post it accordingly.
I forgot, it was, it was, uh, vacation. Is anybody going away?
I'm here.
I'm going away the following week, week- Thursday, Friday, Saturday, next week.
That would not be a bad one.
I may want to leave early.
I got a cheap ticket on that cruise ship, that's in the-
Hey, I'm going on Carnival, I just booked it last week.
Tuesday, I have commitments. I can do it at night.
Well, I, that, it would have been at night.
You could do it in Maine. It would be Maine.
You're going to be in Maine?
Well, well.
Got a camp.
Are you going away? If you're going away, you can't leave.
I should be back, I should be back.
On Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Because, see, I may end up, we were, um, if we were going to do anything, it was going to be later in the week.
The twentieth, I'm actually, I'm actually open.
All right, let's tentatively schedule for the twentieth, and we'll rework it if we have to. Because we need to get this-
Why don't we collect five dollars from everyone that we don't show up?
At least five pizzas.
Again, as, as outlined in, in our previous budget subcommittee meeting, uh, the subcommittee was going to look at, at the final product, so whether that's before, it made sense if that was before the fully produced budget. That was the first step to then looking at the budget amongst the entire committee. That's why the school committee voted in favor of establishing the budget subcommittee. So, uh, the budget subcommittee will also be scheduling and, and will look at those dates and see what we can come up with. It is vacation week.
That's your job. Okay. That was fun. You're next.
Um, six.
I'm sorry, what was that, Eric?
Oh, no, I, I-
You have to leave.
I'll cut it close.
Okay.
Six? No? Oh, can we do it? We'll, I will work out the time, uh, after the meeting.
Looks like she doesn't want it.
Time to be determined. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
So, thank you for putting, uh, this item on the agenda again.
I believe I'm right in saying that the last time we talked about this was in June. Which, you know, part of what I want to say about that is that we anticipated even then that this schedule was going to go on considerably longer than we originally had planned for. And indeed, it actually went on even further. Substantial completion really was towards the end of September. There is a provision in our contract for changing the terms of the contract, additional fee if the period of, the time period of the project is extended. And on that basis, the letter is outlining, you know, that when we signed, when we submitted an amendment that actually established our fee, there was an original contract for just the feasibility study and an amendment was required. It came with a schedule. I think that schedule is actually in your package. And we assumed then that all of the work could be done on both of the schools in ten weeks. As it turned out, as a matter of fact, Cape Way managed to get Mac done in, I think, six or five, something along those lines. That didn't really have any impact on our obligation because we were obliged and did have a field person here every, any time that the contractor was on site. So it actually was being much more efficient when Mac and the high school were going out at the same time because he was sort of going back and forth to do that. And, you know, those are really sort of the facts on the ground. It was basically seventy percent more time than we had originally anticipated in terms of just the construction and the construction administrator. I mean, the other thing to say is that when we first started, we really, actually were aiming to get the whole thing done in less than a year. Because I believe that we came on board about this time two years ago. And we're hoping that we could actually get the work done in the summer of 2011. That was the intention of the program. And that it would be over sometime around October or November. And here we are, two years and going on sometime longer. I guess, and other than what's in the letter, I do want to, you know, leave on a positive note. The project in the end is going to come in at, or even a little bit above, a half a million dollars less than the original budget. I know that most of that has to do with bids coming in very good, but I think that it's not blowing our horn too much to say that Pink and Company's presence managing this thing closely has something to do with the fact that we're here, there's a, you know, a good roof on this building that has, the warranty is in place. SOM has come back and taken care of whatever issues there are. It really can now transfer over to a warranty situation. And the project is going to come in about a half a million dollars less than we had originally thought it was going to be.
Carolina?
I need to approve the contract amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Carolina?
I've read the letter. I've actually sat on the building subcommittee, so we discussed this
At nothing.
At the meeting. And I don't think it was Pink's fault. I think they, it was really the contractor is my takeaway from this, that we had no control over. We initially chose them because we had to, not because we wanted to. So I think this is reasonable, the fact that the project did come in under budget. I do agree that is probably, I've seen your work lists and all of the work you did with regard to managing this project, your checklist and everything was exceedingly thorough. And so I think we should move to approve and have the, I guess it's the superintendent that signed it. Whoever needs to sign it, sign it.
Eric?
Carolina's mentioned that we were forced to pick it. Who actually did the, I'm kind of foggy on, who actually did the picking of that company doing the project? Was it Pink and Company? And you recommended him to us? And you were supposed to do all the site visits, not site visits, but do the backgrounds and all, who actually did that process?
So it was, you know, it's competitively bid. And SOM was the lowest bidder. And we did the due diligence, but this is actually why we, even back in the spring, were already saying, this is, well, the whole sequence was, the building subcommittee quite rightly, you know, on our recommendation, said, let's let this guy start early. Because, you know, what we were reading was that he was going to be difficult and it was going to take time. Now, the direct answer to your question is that we did our due diligence. I actually went down to the D-CAM office and pulled out the-
Recommendations.
The surveys, which now, by the way, is something we're going to have to do. You're obliged to do that, the sort of appraisals that you do at the end. And there just was no smoking gun. I mean, you know, and I think our experience has played out, that's right, you called some of the-
Yeah, we called some of the other people at Houston and they all said pretty much what we probably would end up saying, which is, we ended up with a great product, took longer than we expected, and we had to push him along.
I mean, we were talking at the subcommittees, and Caroline, I heard this. One of the things that you have to give SOM credit for is that they asked for very few change orders. When they came in, the prices were always right. So it was always a mixed bag, but that he was-
They even gave us a different-
We have actually a better roof for-
That's right.
What's the funding source for this?
Two pieces. One is maybe MSBA reimbursement.
It is, or it might be.
Okay.
It is.
It is a reimbursement from MSBA.
And we've been getting it all along. And the rest of it was a, basically, we went to the town and asked for debt exclusion. So the money's already been set up by the town and I think it's part of the bonding that they did.
So we already have all the funding sources in place. It's not coming out of our budget, not coming out of the town's budget, not coming out of anything else.
Michael?
And that's, I was going to just follow, follow more. That five hundred thousand dollars we came under, is that not being paid now out of the debt exclusion, or is that, what's that source?
As far as, as far as-
Is that less we have to pay now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, I know George, town treasurer, has been keeping track of how much we spend, how much more we expect to spend. So that he would go and get us close to that amount when he went out for the bonding.
And has any town council or school council had any input on this at all?
Input into which?
We had a PCB project that started at one point two million, ended up at three point one. We have a greens project that started at a certain amount, now it's a different amount. Just wondering if any of the councils have weighed in on it.
I thought, I'm waiting for the defense, she keeps going.
I'm done. I just have to go. I want to get my questions in.
I appreciate your questions. It's very simple in my eyes. Certainly, I'll start with the legal question. This is a request for us to be generous in paying something beyond our agreement. Going back to the selection process, when we discussed the contractor, SOM that did the roof, we were advised that there were certain areas in their public record that indicated that have to be watched closely. We were told not to worry about it because you'd be here anyways. So, so we weren't told, but we're going to have to charge you more for that. So that part I see missing in the selection process, which is what we hired you for. This thirty-five thousand dollars is, what was the total contract?
What was our, what was our fee before?
Well, this is an increase of thirty-five thousand.
Over a hundred and five.
Okay, so it's a thirty-five percent increase. And at the beginning of the process, you told us, we didn't have to worry, you'd be here. We've had this discussion back in June as a full school committee. That's who's had input. And so as far as that extra time, however, I do want to, if that's clear. My view on that is that I would not vote in favor of this motion on the table because I believe it's part of the contractual obligations of Pink and Company to follow through the complete process. And I'm not sure, I know I was at the last budget subcommittee meeting, I'm sorry, building subcommittee meeting, and the checklist was not complete at that time. There was still some issues.
It is complete now.
Okay, so on February fifth, was that complete? Because it was around, what date was that last meeting?
No, they really completed last week, basically.
So we've again requested additional payment and the project still wasn't complete, but it is now. And that's what I, and so that's my statement on why I wouldn't vote for this. But I also, just a footnote, while you're at the table, I want to thank you for the great work that was done. And I would wonder if there's some obligation on our part related to the storm damage, if there was any, or any additional tasks that weren't in the contract. But I believe oversight of the contractor was what the contract was for. So if there's any add-ons that I don't see reflected in this letter, that would be a separate matter.
So if I may, may I just, the letter cites the article in the contract.
That is a provision that says that if the time of the contract goes beyond what was anticipated when the original agreement was executed, which was the amendment back in September of 2011, we are entitled to additional fee. We're entitled to notify you, which we in fact did, that there is a record of that in the letter as well. As soon as SOM came on board and we said this is going to be a problem and we started talking about extending the schedule, we made the statement, if you extend the schedule, the time it's going to take for us to have a person on here forty hours a week or fifty hours a week is increasing by forty or fifty percent. And we've written subsequent letters and made presentations in spring, et cetera.
I would refer you to our legal counsel and the superintendent regarding Article Six. I interpret it much different than you do, or I wouldn't have made that comment earlier. With mutual agreement is what we talked about in June.
Right, that we could-
And that's not what you just said, sir.
Okay.
I have to-
That we can-
Mutual agreement, we could revise that.
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't say, I didn't just mispresent Article Six of the contract.
I have two questions. First of all, the five hundred thousand that they are, and I'm not saying that you didn't. The five hundred thousand dollars that he's saying was saved part in due to their watchdog because this is considerably lower than we had anticipated. Yes? True?
Yes.
Second question is the thirty-five thousand that we're looking at approving or not approving today. I know much of your time spent here at the high school was doing much part to the work that was going on. Forcing you to be here longer and oversee. Is there any retribution that we would have to go back at that company? Because they were definitely-
Nope.
Nothing, huh?
That we did check. The other thing that, you know, just so everybody knows, the last of the work and the-
I call the question, please. He has to leave. He has to leave. He's told you that. It's an important vote.
It doesn't matter to me. Honestly, I don't think my vote's going to make a difference either way. I really don't think it will.
That's fine. He answered my question anyway.
I'm asking you to give us a courtesy.
All right, Michael. I'm sorry when the school committee members have to leave. I do want to get my information as well.
Listen, I called the question. I have a right to make a statement that I'm calling the question.
Maybe if you limited your answers to a little shorter, I would have had a chance to get my question in.
I called the question.
All those in favor of awarding, what was her?
Approve the contract amendment.
All those in favor of approving the contract amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Can I just mention one other thing that is not in the letter? I am operating on the assumption you certainly proceed accordingly. It's not a guarantee, but this should be reimbursed by the MSBA at the same reimbursement rate, meaning that the town's obligation will just be half of this, given that there is an article in the contract for it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So should we revise that in the motion that we just spent?
No, all he's saying is that-
He didn't reference an amount.
He basically-
Thirty-five thousand, or is it?
The contract would still be amended by thirty-five thousand, however, he's indicating that when we put this into the state, the state should be able to reimburse it.
Isn't that direct pay?
Huh?
Don't they pay that direct from the state?
Yes.
Okay, so our motion shouldn't be the thirty-five. It should be the sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars that we just spent at taxpayers' money that we could have paid back. It should reference the correct amount.
It didn't reference any amount, so-
Yes, it did. Let us at thirty-five thousand.
That's the contract amendment.
What? You need to amend the contract, you pay and then MSBA reimburses us.
No.
Their percentage. They don't pay the contractor directly.
Is it a direct pay? Or is it a reimbursement? It's a direct pay?
When the bill comes, when the bill comes, we send the bill to the state, the state sends the payment. Doesn't happen.
Okay. Approval of a donation of four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents of advanced readers from Partners.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you once again to Partners for the wonderful donations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What was that? He's an aye.
I'm aye.
Approval of guest instructor series for violin at the MAC through the Music and Arts Collaborative. Dr. Colley, do you want to elaborate on this?
The, basically, Music Boosters made arrangement with local music instructor to bring in like a guest series of instruction for the MAC on violins with donations of time. They're willing to pay the five hundred dollars stipend to the instructor. And so it would be taken in as a donation. This will allow the students to have a ten-week program of music instruction with equipment that she's going to bring.
Sounds great.
And actually, the equipment is being donated by Colleen and Dan Abdekin, who own the violin shop across the street. So they're providing the violins for the kids. So it's sort of a collective thing going on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
And that's for the band?
No, it's for the kindergartners.
So they don't have a band? They have a, who's the instructor?
It's right in the letter in there. It's Megan.
Megan Thomas.
Megan Thomas.
She does the-
I know, I'm trying to look for it.
The New Bedford Arts Collaborative. They do things, New Bedford art, music, things like that. And she certified to teach the kids. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? She does have her resume in here too.
I just was making a point for the audience that we weren't starting a music program for kindergarten. It was not budget-related.
Yes, it is not budget-related.
Donation.
Yes, it's donation. A member requests for professional development. Mas and Mas. Mas. Mas, Mas, Mask, Mass. Dang, three times. Is there a motion to approve this?
Which one was this?
This is the one down in Hyannis.
I haven't asked it to be put on the agenda yet. It's been on there four times, so.
Well, the bill keeps coming.
The bill doesn't keep coming. It was on there before the bill came.
No, actually, another bill just came, correct?
The first bill came after it was put on the agenda, but I hadn't put it on the agenda. I'm continuing to do my research-
Okay, so you want to-
The school committee meetings that said I would go if no one else went.
Okay, so you-
I have the emails.
Apparently want to wait on this.
It's between the school department and Mas, in my opinion. Because it was approved in discussion that we would be sending someone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
There's a policy book that says school committee members have to come, present the documentation, and get school committee approval. We don't approve by discussion, we approve by motion. No motion was ever made. The paperwork wasn't filled. I don't even know if this is the total cost. I don't know whether you're going to include travel with this. I don't know whether you're going to include additional meals with this. I don't even know if this is a final number. And there's a policy. We have a policy book and the book says A, B, C. I don't have it, I can look it up. And A, B, C was not done. So I don't know why we're approving something when the process to approve it was never completed. We were asked to approve this after the fact. We're supposed to approve it before the fact. And discussion is not approval. We have to approve by motion. That's how we make decisions.
Well, seeing, it sounds like you're addressing the concerns that you have. And I would like through the chair just to point out that I went as a backup attendee. Okay, there was a terrible storm during Mas, during the annual conference. I had said I would be willing to go if no one else went. I found out the day of that no one else was going, and it was primarily due to a major storm. I have emails that confirm that correspondent with the superintendent. And I asked for that form I had to fill out because I went the day of. I was told that Michelle was thinking of going up until the storm arrived. So I didn't fill out the form. So do what you want. Mas invoiced you for it. I said, yes, I can go, and I went. I don't know how else to address that paperwork. I was given the new form at the last meeting. If the invoice is the same as the last one, I have an email that said, fill out the form, I'll sign it.
Since my name was mentioned there, I actually was thinking about going. As we all, a couple of us mentioned, we might go. I have to say that I do not remember a storm. Maybe, I don't know. I'm not just saying there wasn't, but that is not the reason that I didn't go. The reason I didn't go is because I hadn't gotten school committee approval. That's why I ultimately did not go.
We talked about it at a meeting.
We did talk about it at a meeting, absolutely. We absolutely did talk about it.
And I actually wanted to go, but could not go. Don't ask me why I couldn't go now, but I remember not being able to go. But if I could had gone, I would have gone. And that was, like Mike said, it was the day before, a couple of days before, whatever it was.
Carolina?
I know, we do have a policy and in the future we-
I didn't go because of the cost. We're slashing and cutting our budget. We're taking supplies out of our classrooms. We're slashing and cutting our budget, we're taking supplies out of our classrooms. I didn't think this was that important for me to take another 455 plus whatever other things may get submitted, if any, I don't know. Out of our budgets. I voted when we did the budget last year to get rid of the line item for conferences and travel for us. We're asking our parents to pay, 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 pay. I know we volunteer, I get that, but I don't feel comfortable paying for a conference. The superintendent went to the conference. If any materials needed to be brought back, we could have asked him, we could have gone online. I'm just not comfortable taking this school's money, taxpayers' dollars, and spending it. Especially in light of the fact that there is a process, there's a policy, BG, right?
No, I don't know, I.
There is a process, and it wasn't followed. And it wasn't followed not once, twice, there's another bill, that the same thing happened. No one came to the school committee, no one said, let's take a vote. So no, I do not agree that we should approve this. I strongly believe we shouldn't approve it. We had a contractor here asking for additional work monies, and certain people didn't want to approve that, to save taxpayers' dollars. Well, there's a policy in place, wasn't followed, but saved taxpayers' dollars.
Michael?
Interestingly enough, during that professional development, two-day seminar, that I traveled each day down to the Cape to listen to specialists. I attended a breakout session put on by MA, the SBA, the School Building Authority. I learned that it had to be by mutual agreement that you would pay a project manager. An extra 30% off what he bid on his contract. And that's where I learned that, so the professional development, I would look at the $6,000 a year we spend to be a member of M.A.S.T. And I've always said that, that if we, if we as members cannot take advantage of this association, then we should stop spending the $6,000 that we pay for membership. I don't know, you know, I've encouraged you all to go, it's well worthwhile.
I will never argue the validity of those conferences, which is four days actually, not two, seven to 10.
You don't have to go to all four.
Well, if you pay for all four, you should go to all four, just my personal opinion, as well as a lunch. My issue with this is, we sat at this table, we sat at this table a year ago approving the same thing. And saying, next time, we need to make sure we do it through the proper channels, and there is documentation to that, because I have looked that up. And there is twice this past year that we've discussed this and said, just a reminder, if you go on a conference, it has to have school committee approval. Now, that's my biggest issue, is that I wanted to go, I actually came in here, and I said, there's no way I can go, I didn't get approval. I didn't go because I didn't have approval. That's my only issue, I'm not ever doubting the validity of.
They also had a breakout session for being a chairperson of the school committee.
Michael, I am not, I am not doubting that they are worthwhile, that is not what I'm having.
I was the third person in line to go. I found out the day of the storm that Tony wasn't able to go, and that he said, you were considering going, I found out, you are not going. And so I said, okay, I'll go, as the third alternative. So at that point, I didn't meet the obligation of filling out the form, and I sent an email to the superintendent.
I actually think I got an email on the Monday from you saying you were going, and it started on the Wednesday. So you may have registered actually there, but all those in favor, I think we've discussed this to death and we know where it's going anyway.
Aye.
Aye.
No? Masbo? Do you, again, this one, this one I actually have a bigger issue with, because I, we didn't talk about this one at all at the school committee.
Why did you put it on the agenda then?
Well, because the bill has to get paid.
Who's the bill made out to?
Are you gonna pay the bill?
Who's the bill made out to?
All right, then, well.
And how much is it?
This bill is for, was it $90 or 105? I can't read this.
No, it's not, it's not 100, it's like $40 for a lunch, and I didn't ask for. I'm not, I'm not looking to.
Registration, non-Masbo member, $105.
Whatever it was, I have never asked to put that on the agenda.
Okay, well, we'll table it again.
If that has my name on it, as far as bill two, then it goes to me.
You got it.
If another bill doesn't have my name on it, don't send it to me.
Kidoki. Approval of the minutes Wednesday, January 23rd, 2012. I'm sorry, yeah, this is what I mean. 2013.
I actually found the spelling wrong.
Wow, Tony.
Yeah, I was surprised.
A second?
Discussion?
Are you seconding?
Second for discussion?
Okay, I didn't hear the second for discussion. Go ahead.
In general, we've had many issues with the video, videography of our meetings, the quality of the sound. We've had previous discussions about a tape recording device at school committee meetings, like all the other town departments tend to use, to back up the minutes. So I had some questions on these sets of minutes, so I'd ask that we not approve these minutes.
What are your questions?
When we're gonna start having a tape recorder of our school committee meetings.
Is that in these minutes?
No, but I can't compare it to the video, because there was problems with the video, and so I have to.
Was there problems with this meeting?
Is the video online?
Hearing it?
No, I'm asking back, I don't know.
Yes, I'm answering your question, because you're asking, I'm telling you, I've watched them on TV and there's some trouble hearing. If that's not news, I get calls about that all the time.
No, I do too, and I have.
So that's why I've asked to have a recording device at the meeting, so I'm asking that.
But the recording device doesn't have to do with this, you want to hold these minutes off forever?
Because I need to hear that I made that request in this minute, in this meeting. I believe that's the meeting that I requested the tape recorder.
Oh.
That was in the executive.
Yeah.
I, well, it's for all meetings, but.
When you brought that up.
It was the same day.
Down at the end of the executive, and that woman there called the chairman here, that's when you brought that up, not in the meeting.
So call this.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We can look into audio tapes, or whatever you do. School committee business correspondence. Magazines, High School Today, Don't, School. Oh, this was, did you make copies of this, Karen? This was something sent by Murphy Hessitum and Lahin, Educational Alert. Just clarifying that students with disabilities have the right to access school sports. So I did ask that, you know, make sure that we see that. New business request?
I'd like to, on our next, one of our next meetings, hey, we're busy with the budget process, but we also have had multiple meetings with various town departments at the administrative level. Regarding safety, and I think we should include some of the general safety, the non-financial items in policy department meetings. Trial safety zones being one of which would be a collaboration between other, the board of selectmen and ourselves. But I think we have to look at the wider net of the safety of our educational environment. Not just cameras and fences, but that's another piece that I think should be looked at.
Anything else? Are there any comments or statements from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Move, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?